City of Lamarck City Council's regular agenda. July twenty second, twenty twenty four. Notice this hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on July twenty second, twenty twenty four, beginning at six P M. in council chambers, at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in accordance with the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. The meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. Council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called order. And Kiera, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A, President. Councilmember District B,
President.
Councilmember District C,
Present.
Councilmember District D,
Present.
and Mayor.
President. Thank you, Kiera. And tonight we are going to ask Councilmember Yansey to lead us in our invocation and Councilmember Lowry to lead us in our pledge. Let's stand if you are able.
Father, we come to you on tonight thanking you to see one more day for you said in your word that your mercies are new every morning. And so we say thank you. We lift up our city. We lift up the ones that we have lost. We pray, God, for our staff and for the volunteers and for our citizens. We pray that you cover this city with your grace, with your love and with your mercy. And now give us your wisdom to make the best decisions for the city. Unite us in love and unite us in our patriotism and love for our country. For God and family, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the potential republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council members. To the family of Mr. Christopher Chris Colombo, present with us tonight. You may approach. Thank you, Susan. On last week, I had the honor of representing twenty thousand of our residents at a memorial for Mr. Christopher Colombo. As many of you know, many of you who've been in and around Lamarck for quite some time. Mr. Colombo was a servant in our city in various capacities. First and foremost, he dedicated his life to protecting our citizenry as a Lamarck police officer. I believe he retired as a Lamarck police officer. And so it goes without saying, he has literally and physically risked his life on behalf of our residents. Secondly, in his retirement, he became a volunteer for our city in the capacity of the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the more serious boards, serious work in our community, a board that helps shapes the way that our community will grow and prosper. And in and around that, he was a little league coach. He was certainly, from what I heard on the other day, he was a mentor to one of the young men in the neighborhood. Tremendous story. And so he was a productive member of this community and brought joy to many members of this community. And so because of that, we certainly acknowledge his life and his legacy in our city with the highest honor that this council can bestow. And that is one of a proclamation. And so the office of the mayor for the City of Lamarck, a proclamation, whereas Christopher Colombo began his life on August fifth nineteen forty one in Galveston, Texas. And whereas he graduated from Ballough High School and furthered his education, the University of Texas Austin, where he studied geology and received an associate's degree in law enforcement. And whereas his drive to make a positive impact led him to career into a career in law enforcement, including time as a Galveston County Constable and officer of the Lamarck Police Department. And whereas his passion for serving his family and community was known to all, he served as Commissioner for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Lamarck and devoted time gardening to gardening, where he shared his fruits of the fruits of his labor with friends and family. And whereas his talents in electronic repairs and his love for music, especially the blues, were known to all, and his love for love and helping hands were just two of his many wonderful attributes. And albeit resolved, the City of Lamarck mourns with the family and friends of Christopher Colombo. And now therefore, we the mayor and city council by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim July nineteenth, twenty twenty four, as Chris Colombo Memorial Day. The City of Lamarck and we do hereby extend our deepest sympathy to those who knew and loved him in testimony whereof witness my hand, the seal of the City of Lamarck on this nineteenth day of July twenty twenty four. Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give a round of applause for Mr. Colombo. And certainly I had the pleasure on that day of meeting Mr. Colombo's son as well as his daughter. And so you now certainly have the floor to express whatever expressions you have. We certainly honor your family today. We would love to hear if you have anything to share from you and your family at this time.
I think you've said it a lot. I appreciate it, guys.
I was getting ready to Kleenex for you.
Thank you.
Item four two presentation from our youth advisory council. Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This presentation has been a long time coming. We did not want to interfere with some of the efforts that were going on throughout the storm and storm recovery to bring this to you sooner. But Ms. Chris McKenzie, known to all of you as the winner of our John Parr Leadership Award, but as part of the All American City competition, has also been a college intern for us. Actually, she was one of our first high school interns when a program started. She, her assignment this summer has been to bring this project in itself into fruition. I want to take a moment to introduce her. She started being a high school intern under the city clerk's office maybe three years ago, I want to say. And then this year was her first year as a college intern. And she has a brief presentation of this program that we were guided to bring during last budget cycle and is an item that you'll have later on tonight during your agenda for consideration. I'd like to turn the floor over, Mayor, for a brief presentation from Ms. McKenzie.
Good evening. As Mr. Garcia said, I've been an intern with the City of Lamarck for three summers now. This will be my third time under the city manager's office. And I'm just going to give a brief presentation over what a youth advisory council is and why it would benefit the City of Lamarck. So this is just kind of a brief overview of me, most of which he gone over, he's gone over. And a lot of my volunteering work and a lot of my background is centered around youth engagement and getting young people energized and excited about participating in civic life. So this is why I chose to work on the Youth Advisory Council project this summer. Now, what is a youth advisory council? The purpose of the City of Lamarck Youth Advisory Council is to offer an open forum to foster communication, education, and information concerning youth and youth-related issues. The Youth Advisory Council provides students in grades nine through twelve with social and civic activities in a safe and positive environment while promoting promoting individual self-esteem and leadership through participation in meetings, events, and community service projects. Some of the benefits of this program include elevating the city's commitment to youth development. It empowers young individuals and fosters their self-confidence. It nurtures essential life and leadership skills, facilitates youth engagement by allowing them to have a voice in decision-making. It encourages the City of Lamarck to advocate for and implement initiatives to address youth needs by gaining insight directly from our students. It promotes relationship building and networking efforts among youth participants. And youth will be better equipped to tackle the challenges of civic life and responsibilities. So why exactly is a youth advisory council important and why would it benefit the City of Lamarck? So according to a survey of young adults ages eighteen to twenty four by the Institute for Citizens and Scholars, thirty-five percent of them do not feel informed enough to participate politically. Thirty-three percent of them do not intend to engage civically. And an overwhelming fifty-seven percent of them are dissatisfied with American democracy. So what does this mean? Young adults continuously feel disenfranchised and unmotivated in regard to government activities. If cities invest in their youth, beginning in high school and middle school, there's an opportunity to increase civic engagement and knowledge as young adults. The only way to solve these issues is by investing in solutions early on. Now, as to my experience with this directly. Being involved with the City of Lamarck has deepened my leadership skills profoundly and has given me opportunities that I have never imagined. Not only have I been able to build lasting connections with community and city leaders, but I have also had the chance to enhance my civic knowledge and further understand how a municipality functions. As a result, I am better equipped to face upcoming political, social, and professional challenges. The Youth Advisory Council would be a reflection of this experience, furthering the mission of the city to invest in youth engagement. Now, as to the structure. The number of members is up to council discretion. The application process consists of an application and an interview. The sample application is included in the proposal packet which is attached to your agenda. The membership term would be from August to June of each calendar year with the application process set for July. The responsibilities in overview includes attending necessary meetings and events, maintaining a community service hour requirement, and contributing to project ideas. Meetings would be proposed for the third Tuesday of each month. And an executive board must submit additional applications. This is a brief overview of the executive board members' responsibilities. The president shall preside at meetings and can appoint special committees as needed. And they are to create and present Youth Advisory Council presentations. The vice president is to act and perform all duties and responsibilities of the president in the absence of the president. There will be a chair of each committee, social and recreation, environmental, school, educational, fundraising, and community service. As to those committees, the social and recreation committee is created to organize a variety of social and recreational programs and events in a safe and positive environment. They are also responsible for the organization of a possible newsletter and announcements for the group. The fundraising committee is responsible for generating financial support by raising funds for the Youth Advisory Council. The environmental committee is to collect and share information related to a wide variety of environmental issues and to organize volunteer projects or workshops for educational purposes. The community service committee is to organize community service projects that will provide an opportunity for members to unselfishly give their time to improve the quality of life in the City of Lamarck. The school issues committee is to address any school issues that may be brought up and sponsor an alcohol and or drug awareness program. Here is a list of potential project ideas for the council. Monthly newsletters for the public, creating updates on the council. Park cleanups, school supply drives, and other school-related services. It has also been proposed for the group to host guest speakers at each monthly meeting to educate them on civic duties and how the city functions. There is a list. It's also attached to your agenda. This is the proposed branding that I have been working on with our other college intern, Ms. Megan Lasure, for your consideration. To conclude. Young people continue to feel dissatisfied with government, which I mentioned, and the way to fix this is by giving them a voice early on. Investing in youth engagement allows for inclusivity and progress both within community and government. Students will have opportunities to volunteer, learn directly from city officials, and have a positive impact on their community. Benefits include leadership experience, civic knowledge, networking efforts, and the chance for the City of Lamarck to hear directly from its youth population. By engaging young people beginning in high school, they will be better equipped and educated to tackle civic life. Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, McKenzie.
Mayor, Council, this concludes the presentation. This is an item for your consideration later on the agenda should you want to discuss it further. Ms. McKenzie may be available if she doesn't have to go to her other commitments this evening for any other questions specifically. But we assisted her as a staff with this presentation to make sure that she captured all the points. She did some research from other cities and best practice. If you remember, this was something that was authorized during the last budget cycle. Ms. Amy, who's not here, she's at the library program that we're having right now, attended the actual state conference for you, Council. Brought back information proceeding for us to move forward with this project. And thus we're bringing that to you. She went in February. We're bringing it to you back now for actual consideration.
Council, do we have any questions for McKenzie?
No, I, you know, I love this because being a student council president in high school and as an ambassador for student council, this is exactly what we have asked cities to do. And I just want to thank Cesar, who, Mr. Garcia, who has a background as a teacher in math to bring this because I think this is such a critical teaching point to show what, who we are as Americans and patriots. So I'm looking forward to seeing this manifest, so.
Thank you.
And very well done, presentation.
Thank you.
This is an observation and I attended that same conference year before last sponsored by the Texas Municipal League, laying the foundation, structure-wise here and following up with staff. The importance of youth councils, as you stated, is making our, or permitting, permitting. We're not going to make anybody do anything, but permitting our youth to have a, an appreciation of, of municipal government. And, and by involvement, and it also permits us to or permits them. And that was the excitement of the youth conference is to interact with each other. That interaction is motivating. After the Santa Fe shootings, which I was involved in terms of responses, my work with the Red Cross, we had some after action, they call them after-action meetings. And the Santa Fe community, working with the FBI liaison, indicated that one of the challenges for that community was there was not any sort of methodology or there was no structure available in that particular community where youth could somehow become involved and be, have some voice in terms of the community activities. And, and that's what this speaks to is lending a voice, permitting our youth to also participate in municipal government by following us as well, and to understand that in the reality, youth municipal government particularly is something that is ultimately where five people, perhaps from very different backgrounds, have to come together and find some common, common, common agreement to deal with the issues that we have as this community and to build a stronger community. So great success. I'm of course supportive of this particular effort.
Thank you.
Your data suggests that thirty-five percent of youth don't feel informed enough. Looking to see if there is any sort of consistent reason behind them not feeling informed enough. Is it that there, the information is not on platforms which they frequent? Is the information more complex? And therefore intimidating? What, if, if any, support have you gleaned from this thirty-five percent don't feel informed enough? How so?
I think it's a combination of those issues, honestly. And a big part of that is not investing in that education and putting it directly in their faces when they're young. As somebody who graduated high school last year, if I wanted to, I went to Santa Fe High School. If I wanted to go out and get that information about civics or about voting, I had to go and seek it. It was never put directly into my face, and I certainly never got the chance to connect with other students my age on those issues or learn from people like all of you who are, who are in this position and know from experience what it's like. So I think with the Youth Advisory Council, a big aspect of that, as I mentioned in the proposed project section, would be having city leaders and community leaders come to these meetings and give them direct and simple-to-the-point information about why civics is important, why it's important to feel energized and want to be engaged in their civic responsibilities and their duties.
So would it be, would it be safe to assume then the fifty-seven percent of folks that, young people that you've suggested that are dissatisfied with democracy? Would it be? Would it be possible that they are dissatisfied with American democracy because they have not yet been truly informed as to what American democracy truly is?
Yes, sir. I believe so. Again, as, I'm nineteen years old, so as somebody who's in that exact position, like I said, if I wanted that information, I had to go out and seek it. And it's really hard to feel hopeful about municipal government, state government, national government even. And it's hard to want to feel motivated to go out and make my voice heard when that information is not given directly to me. So I think this opportunity would give students the chance to connect with each other and share their views and connect with people within the community that could possibly inform and educate them on these important topics.
Very good. Any, any more questions?
I guess, Mayor Bell, my only, my only concern with this would be the data that's provided to them. You know, it could be skewed one way or the other. So how, how would we monitor what, what kind of information is given to them to, to pass to other students? Because it could be abused one way or the other.
Certainly.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Part of the program is although we, we, we would educate youth on, on civic engagement, there is no political tie to anything that we do. So there is nothing political in that sense. This organization is more about civic engagement, a form of service, in the form of being involved and knowing where to go to ask certain questions and to have a platform for youth voices to be heard. Not to be construed with anything having to do with voting or anything else. It's teaching them Robert's rules. It's having an actual board in a setting where there's, you know, a chair, you know, vice chair and so on and so forth. So it's teaching them that aspect when it comes to that, not so much from the political standpoint. And, and there's a little more of that in the actual package where we line exactly what they're doing. There's no time to really learn into getting the political side of things. It's more of how does government work? It's, it's instilling that civic engagement from the beginning from that, not to become a political platform, but more of a civic engagement, a youth civic engagement platform to have the leaders of, of civic involvement for the future.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
What, what, to follow up on that, we would, we, not council, but we essentially, the youth council would be able to create in their bylaws, right? Certain boundaries. So that, that, that even the bylaws would suggest that, that this this organization cannot be partisan in any way, so on and so forth. And that it would be limited to the informing, the training, the sharing of basic American democratic values. So there, there are ways we can make sure that we write into those bylaws as a youth advisory council. The, the mission.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Along those lines, Mayor, just the and I, I asked a question two years ago and some responded that it was still going on. It was, I had the fortunate I consider fortunate opportunity to participate as a member of Boy State. And there's also a Girl State. And that's something for Texans who got here a little later. But that, that is a that's, that's a effort by, I think it's the VFW, if I'm mistaken, that is involved in sponsoring just this, but at a, at a state level. And we elected a governor, we elected our members to the House of Representatives, senators, we, we, I guess I was a young politician and I didn't even know it, right? I was, but yes, and, and Girl State. I just remember the fun that we had at the University of Texas at Austin. And those relationships still carried over to this day.
There's nothing further. Ms. McKenzie, excellent presentation. I believe the council will seriously consider this. And if you have to leave, I'm sure someone will inform you of our decision as soon as we make a decision, if we make one tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Great job. Item five, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. You wishing to speak, give the mayor of the presiding officer your full name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Plying with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal oral attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you're visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute and unmute yourself. If you are visiting with us via the Zoom platform on a smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. If you are visiting with us in person, you may approach the podium to at the center aisle, and you will be heard at this time. Remember, when you address the council, you address the council as one unit. And there will be no and there will be no personal attacks allowed. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak? And there are no persons here visiting with us tonight wishing to speak, so we'll move past item five. Thank you for your consideration, council. Item six, a public hearing, six one. Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Parks Grant, considering enhancements to Mahan Park located within a one-hundred-year floodplain. Before we move into our public hearing, Mr. Garcia, would you like to refresh all of our memory as to this grant?
Certainly. Texas Park and Wildlife is the same funding agency that we received the funding for our current boat ramp project that we have already started, bid out for construction, and is on its way towards construction. This grant in particular, under direction of the Parks Board, under last year, they gave us as a staff the direction to bring to you for consideration grants to develop Mahan Park as as the next park. This particular one is for the baseball fields, to develop the baseball fields more into clover orientation, so they all have one one central location bathroom area, as long as necessary parking, security lighting, sidewalks, and so forth. So this would be to enhance the baseball side of the fielding at Mahan Park specifically. It is a fifty-fifty match. As you know, anytime that we go, anytime we go after this type of funding, a a public hearing must take place, and thus this is what we're bringing to you tonight.
Very good. A fifty-fifty match, what is the total of the project?
Total proposed is not to exceed seven hundred and fifty. The match would be three seventy-five, which there's enough to cover through the Park CIP fund should should we learn to be funded.
Did that last part again? You just said, what should be enough, what?
In the Park CIP fund, that's the mandatory two-dollar fund.
There should be enough.
There is enough, more than enough to cover.
To match it?
To cover the match portion, the city's match would be covered through that fund.
You said up to seven fifty thousand?
Seven fifty, and the match would be, half of that would be not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Let's make sure that when we reach this item, that the finance director has those figures available for council.
Certainly.
Let's before, you want to go, you want to go before the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was trying to get us, there you go. Ms. Nance, let's close the regular meeting at
six thirty-two.
Six thirty-two, and we will open the public hearing for item six one. Texas Parks and Wildlife, a local parks grant, considering enhancements to Mahan Park located within one a one-hundred-year floodplain. Open the public hearing at six thirty-two. Are there any persons online wishing to speak to item six one? Are there any persons online wishing to speak to item six one? We'll move now to those who are physically present. Are there any persons in this location, at this location, wishing to speak to item six one? Any person at this location wishing to speak to item six one? One more time, any person at this location wishing to speak to item six one? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at?
Six thirty-three.
And we will reopen our regular meeting at six thirty-three and move to item seven, minutes. Gus, if you don't mind, I will read all of these and take them at one time?
That's fine.
Thank you. Seven one, council retreat minutes of six twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. Seven two, special joint meeting minutes of four twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Seven three, regular city council minutes of two twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Seven four, special city council minutes of seven thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Seven five, regular city council minutes of four twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Seven six, special city council minutes of eight nine, twenty twenty-two. Seven, where am I? Seven seven, regular city council minutes of eight eight, twenty twenty-two. Seven eight, regular city council minutes of seven eleven, twenty twenty-two. Seven nine, regular city council minutes of one ten, twenty twenty-two. Seven ten, regular city council minutes of twelve thirteen, twenty twenty-two. Council, at this time, are they, are there any omissions? Are there any changes, amendments, excuse me, that need to be made to any of these ten items? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item eight, old business. Eight one, proposed resolution, authorizing signatories for contractual documents and fund requests pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant mitigation, CD, GB, MIT, two-inch waterline replacement. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Mayor, this is a standard document that we need to bring to you, that it just allows us to make sure that we have a signatory authorization for this particular grant. This was our two-inch waterline replacement project that we received funding for. We were ready to move this project forward, and the funding agency has asked us to make sure that we have this document read it read into the record so we can proceed.
A two-inch waterline from which award was this?
This would have been the second round of the MIT, so the MIT mod, it would have been, I want to say Rick and Mayor Protem were there for the image, the picture that was taken with Mr. Buckingham for the actual award. And this is specifically, we put in for the two-inch waterline replacement in District B.
Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Garcia on item eight one? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the.
Is that a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Before you move on, this will be resolution number R dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four two.
Four two. Thank you, ma'am. Item nine, new business items presented to council for discussion and possible action. Proposed ordinance extending a declared state of disaster and emergency in the city of Lamarc because of the impact of Hurricane Barrel, confirming and ratifying any emergency proclamations and regulations issued by the mayor in response to the damage, injury, or loss of life and property resulting from said hurricane, waiving permit and inspection fees, making various findings and provisions relating to the subject. This is the first and final reading pursuant to the City of Lamarc Texas Charter Agreement, Section two point two three. Kyle, would you give us an update as relates to emergency operations before we proceed?
As far as emergency operations go, we are still passing out and distributing water at our city hall location right now during work hours. We have received some extra water from the state through a star request, and that's what we're passing out until we run we run out. As of today, we've picked up seven point six thousand cubic yards of debris. Debris has been running about two days, I want to say. Let's see. We will be releasing some information on some of the spots that they have hit, just for citizens to kind of know where they're at. We are not sporadically hitting them. We have, the debris monitoring company did a windshield assessment, and they started in the heaviest areas. We have had some of our neighboring cities that were not able to start the debris pickup as early as we did, so some of their trucks came over here, so we were able to get a faster jump on them. But they'll be leaving to go back over there, and I think we'll be down to four trucks, which is our hundred-foot trucks. I believe it's a truck and a trailer. As far as that goes, that's all I can, you know, we're just in debris mon, uh, man, pickup mode right now.
Council, do we have any questions for Kyle as relates to the latest update from the Emergency Operations Center?
So what district or area did they determine was the hardest hit?
I can get with them to see what district they are. I apologize, I don't exactly know the district map offhand as far as which roads are split to what districts. I believe they are running two in District C. And then they were running two over, what is this area?
I don't know.
A, one and D. B?
B or A.
B or A?
The map that we had doesn't overlap with the district.
We we didn't, we didn't have them go by district. They went by the windshield assessment of what was, when they drove around the town, what was the heaviest that way. They can start picking up the the biggest bulk and give those that didn't necessarily have their trees and limbs out, if they had any, out at the road. Because, you know, debris pickup is a is a citizen-driven operation, and what we mean by that is, you know, citizens have to bring their debris to the road to get picked up, so we want to allow that time for them to do that. So some that were able to get a bigger jump start or had more that had it out that they seen as a heavier pickup, they started with those those areas first.
So a couple of things. I I've been out cutting for the last couple of weeks, and and from my, what I've seen, the hardest-hit area would be Austin, Houston, in through that area. And then I guess the second thing would be, there are some trees that are pretty massive that are up close to the roadway. Is there going to be any type of removal for the citizens with that?
So the trees that are in the cities right of way, we did have a salt, we we do have a salt team with the debris management, debris pickup that came down, and they are cutting trees and I can give you, let's see, that's trucks.
Do you have a contact for them, or can we put that out for citizens?
No, I mean, the contact could be, if they want to call the emergency management line and and leave a voicemail like we did with the power, but we're not given direction for debris management, debris pickup to drive from one side of town to another to pick up one pile and then come back and drop it off. The pile is out at Mahan Park. That's where our debris management site is. We can't, nobody can dump there. I mean, it's not a bring, you know, we, the federal guidelines outline what we can and can't do. So all I can say is that they they have began, they have started. We did start with a lot more resources to get a heavier start initially, just because weather and and permits for other cities allow those resources to be available. Weather permitting, they're hoping theoretically to be done the first pass through the city, you know, in a in a few weeks, and then we'll be talking about timelines as when they'll go back and start picking up more, and right now they're only picking up the vegetation debris.
Okay.
They said actually from their windshield assessment, there's not a whole lot of fence debris. And, you know, we didn't have a flood event or nothing like that, so it's not like refrigerators and paint cans, that those would be just on our normal, not trash pickup, but our yearly annual spring cleanup.
Excellent. Thank you.
No problem.
Hey, any more questions?
So they're planning on doing another pass through the city again once they're done?
Yes, so right now they're doing the initial pass through the city, and they're picking up all the vegetation. At that point, when they get, let's say seventy-five percent done, then we'll also have a discussion with them on timelines and messaging to let everybody know, hey, you know, we we, they will be coming back down your street. Please, you know, if you haven't yet, get everything out there.
Is there a link of cut, or do or do they not matter because there is a claw pickup?
Does not matter because it's claw pickup. The, one of the things that that does matter that we've been putting messaging out is trash bags. They will not pick up trash bags. We cannot pick up trash bags. Trash bags cannot be hidden in a pile of debris. Trash bags cannot be next to debris, or else that debris pile won't get picked up.
Okay.
Trash bags would need to be either put in the trash can and taken out with trash, or cut open and left there in the trash bag removed.
Kyle, you mentioned something on the size. To be clear, been driving around today
Right.
doing DA. You can't have your whole tree intact and expect to be picked up over in District, the Highlands, over on Perthus Farms the area, which I saw is the biggest hit in terms of of debris.
Okay.
The, there are some still intact trees.
Yeah.
No, no claw will pick up.
Yeah, I mean, there there's, I guess you could say, good judgment. It doesn't have to be like bundled like the trash circus is. It doesn't have to be like that, but it doesn't need to be manageable.
Yeah.
I will reach out to the debris pickup company and see what that footage or weight could be, and we'll put those numbers out there for everybody to know. But, I mean, for people to even get the trees that they cut down to the right of ways, you would imagine that it's cut into manageable pieces that they could move up. But that's, that's, I guess, I will get the numbers and we will, we will put out some sizes then.
But they will, most of the next couple of weeks, they'll be picking up.
Yes, most likely, you know, we, so it it's hard to give timelines. It's it's very difficult. Plus, we don't want to be held to a timeline. I don't want to sit up here and say it's going to take us, you know, two weeks. And and it takes us four weeks because of the weather, or it takes us a week and a half. You know, this is one of those citizen-driven things, so sometimes starting, getting done on time is kind of kind of hurts. But it's kind of good at the same time, so it, you know, you're.
So when our constituents access, you know, when they're coming to pick it pick it up, what I've been saying is it'll be the next couple of weeks.
Yes, they, like I said, they are picking up right now. And let's just say it takes them two weeks to pick up for the first time. Well, you know, in two and a half weeks, they'll be like, hey, we're seventy-five percent done. We're gonna start, you know, we're gonna look at starting, you know, from the beginning again. How how does that sound? Do you want to get your messaging out? You want to, you want us to, you know, this gives you a couple of days, two or three days to tell those citizens, hey, we've been picking up for a week and a half. Please get, make sure that everything is to the road, because our last, you know, our last pass, let's say, coming through is going to start Monday on, you know, August first, whatever, whatever it might be.
So so you all will be giving those messaging out?
Yes, we will be putting messaging out.
One more thing, Mayor Bill. I know these things cost money, but i- is there anything to help the elderly or possibly veterans that are maybe disabled or anything in the community?
So what I've been directing, anybody that calls and asks to try to communicate with your local church groups and stuff like that, I know a lot of them in the past have helped senior citizens out. We have a request and a meeting with the state to go over, they have a team called the Baptist Men Salt Team. And we are seeing, what are the requirements and how we can get tho- those individuals deployed down here, which will help with senior citizens or special need families, things like that, on picking up the yard and getting some of that tree to the to the road.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
See. Let let me, hold on a minute, Mayor Protem. Caesar, along those lines, didn't we have a Seth grant? Yeah, I wanted to, yeah, and then and then we'll we'll have Mayor Protem come back.
So in addition to that request, we're also working with United Way to find out if some of our Seth fans, Seth funds from that Seth grant that we received are available towards its expense. We met with them late last week. We're waiting to find out when we can launch that that actual opportunity as well.
So so council member Laura, is Seth Grant in Southeast Texas Housing? Is that what it is?
Southeast Texas Housing.
And they they granted us about fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty thousand dollars, which was brought before this council, and the breakdown, again, I'm going by memory, I believe, was thirty-five thousand towards utilities systems, ten thousand towards fire recovery. 35,000 towards a utility assistance, 10,000 towards fire recovery and about 5,000, uh, for, for specific. Uh, needs such as this. Um, this was one of the qualifying expenses. So if we needed to change those. If, if the need arise to change those, then, then we can definitely look at doing that. But that is secondary to what is already available to us through FEMA. We're also working with any other sources that we could find as well.
Very good. Mayor Proton?
And under that category of other sorts, other sources, I just wanted to comment that we also have. Uh, UMCOR, which is the United Methodist Church Group, and we also have the Lutheran, uh, men as well. Out of, uh, uh, Christie Day, out of Nassau. They that are also gearing up.
Uh, we are mayor, uh, and council, we are putting a list together actually through, uh, Venetia, our, uh, utility building supervisor. They have started putting together the list of folks who are calling for assistance so we can turn those over to any applicable resources that we have.
I wanted to make sure that we are also, uh, claiming the damages to our buildings. Claiming, uh, potential mitigation for, I think we talked a little, a little bit about this. Uh, generators for our lift stations. Um, as well as, um. The buildings that have been, uh, the barn structure. That, that has been in essence destroyed. So, so I want to make sure that we're, we're not only claiming the damages to our buildings, but they were also. Putting ourselves in position to further mitigate. Uh, as it relates to the mission of FEMA. To, to further mitigate damages, uh, in future storms. So generators and things of that nature, items of equipment. Uh, I, I believe there, there was a pump, uh, that's necessary for the melody. Um, lane group, uh, for, for flood mitigation. So all of those things are also, and I'll give you a chance to speak to that. These things are also, uh, being prepared during this, uh, emergency disaster period as well.
Uh, yes, we have, uh, looked at doing, uh, generators at the pump sites. Uh, I spoke to, um, Mr. Shannon. Rose and, um. He informed me that there is a project that is ongoing, uh, to add that as well. Uh, along with the, we spoke about the erosion of banks out at Highland Bayou Park. Uh, some of the damage that we took at our city facilities, we have catalogued, pictured and submitted all that to the state. As we are supposed to through this P stats, which is the public version of the, uh, I stats. Which is what we ask citizens to do. Which is where you report your damages that you took from the storm and it reports it to the state. Which then FEMA gets that information and that shows the need in certain areas for more assistance than others possibly. Um, and I believe some other groups or nonprofits might help by using that data to, to see what is. Um, what the need is for certain communities to come down and, and help assist. Uh, that's why the I stats, uh, was a very important thing for citizens to, um, to do. Uh, that is one of the things that we had the Texas Forester Service down here assisting with as well. But as back to your, um. Your request, yes, we have been looking at the, uh, the generators for the facilities. We've reported, we, we have reported. And continue to report any damages that we find at our own city facilities, our own equipment, things like that. That is a need to help for mitigation, along with damages that we have just, we have taken because of the storm.
Thank you, God. Any, uh, any more questions for item nine one?
Mayor, do you have a question? This is after the form of the resolution. Uh, Gus, it's extended for another seven days from today?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, and then what happens after that?
It would expire, um, you know, I, I guess I would talk to the emergency management team if they needed extended again. Then we would have to have a meeting to do that. But the, uh, the fee waiver, um, extends past that.
Um, Mayor, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Say there, well, there'll be, um, monitors out there, monitoring, uh, so that residents know they just can't put anything out there. That's not deemed storm, you know, related.
Yes, so there is a, so there is a monitoring company that monitors the debris managed, the debris pickup company. So they monitor the loads that are picked up, sites in which they're located at. And they, with pictures, GPS, the whole nine yards, uh, and they monitor that truck that comes into Mayhem Park. Uh, they weigh it, they inspect it, they take pictures of it before it dumps and after it leaves. To ensure that all the FEMA rules are being met from both, both companies.
It's worth noting that this calls for a, uh, the waiving of permit and inspection fees. Which historically we have done. Question about, uh, the, uh, wind turbines. Uh, does this permit fee waiver cover the reinstallation of those?
Do not know. I believe this was only for, um, making sure that we were reinstalling electricity. For the electricity point. So if it's to the electrical point that's providing electricity to that said facility. Wouldn't be that separate facility, then the answer would be yes. Business or residential to both get it back on and also for the inspection fees to get it back on.
So. I assume that at some point we will, we would as a council move to, uh, perhaps looking at. Uh, permit fees as it relates to, um, home repair. Uh, that can be tied directly to Hurricane Barrel. So that's something that will be coming to us.
If I may, this is all building fees. If there's a building permit fee, this waves it. As to Hurricane Barrel.
Okay.
For repairs related to that.
Okay, so we're covered.
Yes, I mean, I would defer to Chief Merriman, but if he considers, I assume it's him. But if they consider it a, a building permit fee. This covers it.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, question. This, the waiver of the fees is not saying. That you don't need a permit. You still need to come down and ask for the permit. We don't want un. Uh, regulated activity in the city. That's where Lamar gets into problems. So you'd need to come down, get your permit. There's not a fee for it. Um, there is not a permit required for. Fences, we, that was something that came up before. You don't have to come down for fences. Unless you have problems with your neighbor or something, you guys work it out between yourselves. That's not the city's business. Uh, or the city attorney's business. Uh, or the police business. We make sure all those things have occurred in the past. And, um, and the waiver of the inspection fee is also saying that. That's only the waiver of the fee and inspection still is required to hook up that electricity. Because God forbid, we've already seen fires occurring with the electric hookups that have been returned to some buildings. In, in this region. So just to be clear.
Thank you for that, Joe. There's no further discussion. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Uh, any more discussion? There you go. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nine two proposed resolution. Excuse me, before we go back.
Thank you. It should be ordinance number O dash 2024 dash zero zero one four.
That's zero zero?
One four.
One four, thank you. Uh, nine two proposed resolution approving an application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Local Parks Grant. Uh, this is the. Believe this was the. Public, thank you, Joe. A public hearing. Ms. Turner has positioned herself to answer any questions. Uh, council, do we have any questions for, uh, Mr. Garcia or Ms. Turner at this time on item nine two?
Mr. Garcia, as I recall, this has the support this grant of the Parks Board. Correct. And you didn't mention that during your.
Yes, Mayor Proton, and I believe there's a letter of support from them in the applications, in, in the package, excuse me.
Any further discussions, any questions? I, I would like to know if this, uh, proposed. The proposed work that would be done on Mayhem Park is consistent with our master parks plan.
Yes, Mayor, it is consistent with the Parks Master Plan.
My next concern then would be. Um, it seems to me, and then, and here we are again. Uh, that we are, um. Plying for grants. With matches. And these matches are considerable amounts of money. Now, this particular grant, uh, is Texas Parks and Wildlife, and so the match. Uh, is proposed to come from, uh, our, uh, Parks Fund. Uh, and so it does not, it cannot, those monies cannot be used for, uh, any other items. Uh, unless they relate to parks and parks improvement. Correct. Um, but that's about $350,000. So, and so how much, uh, is in that line item? Uh, currently, Ms. Turner?
760,000.
Are there other, any other earmarks associated with that line item? Any other projects that councils committed those monies to?
I would have to take a look.
I believe it's on the grants table.
Yes.
On your, on your, um, on your grants sheet, which is another item to be discussed shortly. There's a commitment for the Mayhem Park Boat Ramp of roughly 156, 825. And you've already paid for the Mayhem Boat Ramp Planning of 2616. So that's already been reduced from that amount. But uncommitted but haven't paid yet to date is the 156, 825 there.
156. Eight twenty five.
Yes, ma'am.
Leave about 600,000.
So that leaves $250,000 left.
Yes, roughly correct, yes, ma'am.
And what work, what, tell me again, what, what all work will be done for this $700,000 grant?
Uh, this grant opportunity is to specifically address the baseball fields.
How are we gonna address them? I'm sorry.
Sure, certainly. Uh, the, before they were all scattered. We are now doing what is called a clover effect so that they could all come together, if you will. Um, in kind of a, if you can imagine like a three leaf clover. With one central bathroom concession stand area. Sidewalk, bleachers, fencing, field upgrades. So it would be the entire nucleus of what that section would entail.
And that's it?
Yeah, that, that accompanied with sidewalks, safety lighting.
So we're talking about the concrete. Are we adding, are we adding parking?
Yes, that includes parking, parking accessibility and so forth.
Has this design? Has this, has the design of this particular portion of Mayhem? Been integrated with the new designs for the boat ramp?
By integrated, yes, because they're in the same location, but they don't cross paths.
Okay.
That.
But they, do they fit and flow?
Yes. Actually, they, they complement each other well because of the upgrades to parking being done at the boat ramp. And then, and then the upgrades being proposed through this plan. So they are all in line with the Parks Master Plan that, that, that would defend that.
Does that fit and flow with this new, uh, water wastewater treatment plant that we will have? Uh, at that location that will double in size?
Yes, Mayor, it actually does not abut to either of those two sides or those projects. So they all. Symbiotically fit into the same overall layout without interfering with each other. Okay.
Mayor Proton, did you have some?
Mayor, as the, as the official member. Uh, the Parks Board representatives. Hope that this grant will also ultimately result in. Uh, the Mayhem Park becoming, uh, available to the public and different groups. Uh, for rent. And, uh, to, to turn that into an asset of the city, uh, that we can be proud of. And, uh, uh, also provide other opportunities for our youth.
Very good. Thank you. Any, uh, any more questions for Ms. Turner? Uh, or Mr. Garcia as it relates to item nine two? Where are we, uh, Kira? Are we, do we need a motion?
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Again, I have been, uh. Trying to ensure that, uh, we do not overextend ourselves, uh, with. Uh, grant funding opportunities. Uh, these grants, many of them come with matches. However, this particular grant. Uh, the match will come out of the Parks. Uh, the Parks Fund, uh, Ms. Turner suggests that we are able to accommodate this. Uh, Mr. Garcia has assured us that this is in line with the mission of the Master Parks Plan. Uh, and so I believe we can, we can move forward. Any further discussion? Here you go. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine three? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, it's gonna be resolution number R dash 2024 dash zero zero four two.
Four?
Two.
Four two was eight one.
No, 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 four, this is resolution number. The first one was a ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. It's four three.
It's four three. Thank you. Item eight, I'm sorry, nine three, Fire Department PPP, uh, gear purchasing 10 new sets. Of firefighter personal protective equipment. As, uh, Chief Merriman approaches, I believe this was an item that was looked at under grant funding, but. There is a timing issue, uh, as, as, as I visited with, uh, Chief Merriman and Mr. Garcia. Chief Merriman.
Good evening, Mayor Council. There is, um, so we have, uh, 10 of our firefighters are in bunker gear. That expires August 1st. Um, and we have put in for a Lone Star Grant and an AFG Grant to purchase more bunker gear. Um, but unfortunately they run on the same budget cycles as municipalities do. So we may not hear anything from those until September, October. So we need to approve purchasing 10 sets of bunker gear. I've got money in Fund 48. And some other line items I'm going to combine to take, um, the money for those, that gear, um. Excuse me, uh, the comp, the company that we have gone with is HGAC. They have an HGAC contract, so. Um, and they've also agreed that even though it's a 60 day, 60 to 90 day turnaround on bunker gear being custom built. Um, once we get sized for the gear, they will provide us loner gear. Um, the only cost that we would incur for the loner gear would be if we damage it during a fire and it has to be cleaned. Um, other than that, they're going to come. Come out sizes and they will bring us loner gear until our gear is built so that none of our firemen go without. Uh, protective gear. Uh, in fact, the new gear is actually, um. Better than our current spec of gear. Um, the industry standard comes off of, um. They have two numbers that they base their industry standard off of, which is a, uh. TPP and a THL, which is your thermal protective performance. Uh, our current spec, um, we run about a forty one point one on the thermal protective performance. The new gear will actually be forty two point two. And the, the THL, the total heat loss, which is. How quick the gear expels the heat. Um, our gear is currently at two sixty eight. Our new one will be at two ninety six. So what that does is while. Uh, in an ideal H environment during a fire, it's going to protect us better under the thermal protective. But when we're on. Car wrecks and we have to wear bunker gear because we're using our, the Jaws of Life, uh, the new liners that we are putting in, um. Wick the moisture away and they expel the heat faster than our current bunker gear. So it'll keep our guys cooler when they're on. On scene for, for non-fire related stuff. Um. One of the new added, there's two added features that we've added to the new spec of bunker gear is a victim drag strap. So. Um, Mayor, you being a fireman, you know, we used to carry a piece of webbing in our pocket to put around. And drag them out. So the new gear actually has one built into this, the sleeve. To where as you, you pull it out of the sleeve and you can wrap it around and you can drag your, your victims out with that. And, um, because there's a lot of two-story homes going up in Trolls and Woodhaven and some of these other places, we have. Integrated a bailout belt in, so. Our gear has a belt in it. It's non-load bearing. So what we're doing is we're taking that belt out and adding a. Load bearing belt that will help that fireman in case he has to bail out a window. Um, it's basically a safety precaution for, uh, an escape route. It's, it's a better gear. Granted, the gear that we're wearing is not bad, but in ten years, which is where we're at, we're at the life expectancy of our gear. It expires every ten years. NFPA says. Once you buy a set of gear from the manufacturer date, you have ten years. Doesn't matter if it's set on a shelf, used to, when, uh, Mayor, when you were a fireman. That gear, as long as it's set on a shelf, it was ten years service life. Well, now the NFP has come back and said it's ten-year life period. Doesn't matter from the day of the beer, the day of the manufacturer. Ten years, that gear is no longer any good and we can't use it. Um, we were hoping that our, our grants were going to come through before we lost these ten sets of gear, but. We, we're not going to make, we're not going to get the, the grants before that, so.
Council, do we have any questions for Chief Mayorman as it relates to item nine three?
I thought we'd already spent the money with ARPA funds. For this.
So not, not for bunker gear.
Your boys need to be protected, so.
Was it earmarked through ARPA?
No, sir, we, y'all earmarked, um. Thermals. Thermals, radios, jaws of life.
It, it was, but we moved it out because of the grant. That's what it was.
Correct.
Yeah. We did, we did initially, but then, then the grant. Uh, came.
Right, the A, we applied for the AFG grant because the, the number of sets that we could have got through AFG was going to be more than we were going to be able to get through.
Right. Chief. There's a problem when, uh, when, when, when fire departments have different manufacturers. Of, of, uh, personal protective equipment. And so if you had one manufacturer, Morning Pride, here. And you had another manufacturer, whatever that would be here. Um, there is a danger. Uh, when those two sets of personal protective equipment are used. Uh, on the same shift. Uh, at the same station, same apparatus, because they may not protect. Uh, at the same levels. And so you perhaps might be endangering one firefighter over the other inadvertently. Uh, you are saying to us that this new gear Morning Pride. Uh, has all of these features, but you're only acquiring ten units. How will you keep, uh, our firefighters, uh, with the same level of protection? Uh, as we move from one. Manufacturer of personal protective equipment over to the other manufacturer of personal protective equipment.
So what we. The, the gears, so. They're pretty close. The only reason the newer, the newer spec is a little better is because. It's the latest and greatest gear that's been made. Um. Our, what we're transitioning, we still have the same certifications as far as. Uh, being able to inspect and clean and take care of. And, um. We are, we currently, all we're doing is, so we have Globe, uh, the gear that's actually expiring now is, um, lion gear. So. Um, we were already shopping around to find, you know, the next. The newest. I won't say the great, latest and greatest, but, um, a better protective, a better set of gear for our dollar. And, um, Morning Pride was the gear that would come in when we. The company that's going to put the Morning Pride gear together can get us gear in. Um, they say sixty to ninety days. They've been delivering in about forty five. They also provide a loner gear to whereas Globe, uh, the last ten sets of Globe gear, we waited eighteen months for. Um, and it's just. And it's the same, the, the difference in the, the, the protection layers are the same. Um, the Morning Pride has some different features, but the thermal protection layer and the. The total heat, the THL layers are pretty comparable across the board. It's just a different manufacturer. It's kind of like going from Ford to Chevy.
Is there a way, uh, to, to integrate? New manufacturers of personal protective equipment, uh, that. Uh. Takes into account the different, uh, specifications, the different ratings and things of that nature. Uh, I know it is, is, is probably extremely hard for smaller departments to do so. Um. But is there a process? Is there a way? Is there a policy that we could use to help keep our folks safe?
So our, our. Our own SOG for our personal protective gear when we do our inspections and cleanings and maintenance. Um, it incorporates all of that, all of our guys, anybody that looks at our gear to repair it. Um, clean it or inspect it has to be, uh, NFPA eighteen fifty one certified. For this, and each one of them has a specific, like, we have to be, like, our old gear. Um, I say old gear, the current gear that we're in, the outer shell is the same. What we've done with the, because both the Globe and the Morning Pride use what's called a Combat Flex seven outer shell. It's pretty durable. Has ripstop in it, keeps it from, supposed to keep it from tearing. Uh, the inner liner, where the thermal liner is the ones that they change constantly. Um, my lion gear is different from, um. One of our captains' globe gear to, we, we don't have the ability to. Unless we bought thirty six sets at a time, which we can't afford to do. So what we're trying to do is. Stay comparable with the same, same thermal protective layers that we have and not, uh.
Yeah. So you, uh, you're saying you're trying to stay, I got, I got you. I got you. Got you.
Without being able to buy thirty six sets of gear at one time, it just.
It's just not cost effective.
It's not, it's not feasible for a small town like us to be able to. Unless we get a grant for, for thirty six sets of gear and then. We run into the same problem in ten years when I've got thirty six sets of gear that go out. So we're trying to, trying to space it out. We, that started a few years back where we bought. Ten sets and then we bought five sets and then we're just trying to. Break it up instead of buying thirty six at one time to where we can, you know, a. A, a fifty thousand dollar chunk of change is a little bit easier to swallow than. A four hundred thousand dollar chunk of change on thirty six sets of gear.
Yeah, but the way that you're trying to keep the standard level of protection is. Is through the comparable thermal layer.
Yes, sir. We, we won't, we, so NFPA. So the NFPA already has a, a minimum, a minimum. A, a minimum set of. Numbers for your thermal protective performance and your total heat loss. And it's, the minimum is thirty five at your thermal protective performance. And your total heat loss is two oh five. So our globe gear already far exceeds NFPA's minimum. And we've just managed to find. Because it's a few more years down the line. We've just now managed to find something that's just a little bit better, but it's not less than, than what we're, our current guys are in. Okay.
Any further questions? Here, where are we? I will entertain a motion to approve this request.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you know, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine four.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Right, yeah, thank you, Chief. Nine four whistleblower policy. Reviewing the city's, City of Lamarck's whistleblower policy. Uh, I believe this is Councilmember Lowry, perhaps with some help from, uh, Gus. Is that correct?
Um, I can speak to it, um, if council has any questions for me.
Absolutely. Councilmember Lowry.
With the whistleblower clauses there, and that's one of my questions, is there something we can add to that as, as a reward? Uh, for a, uh, employee that comes forward, uh, as. As a reward, is that something that could be done?
Um, you know, I, I mean, legally, you, I assume the reward is financial. Right. Right. Um, you know, I'd have to look at the rest of the, um. The rest of the employee handbook and, and ascertain what, i- if that's legal and then also what level of, um. What, what the. What the proposed reward would be. I mean, is it something that leads? Is it information that leads to a complaint? Is it information that leads to a successful prosecution, that sort of thing?
I think prosecution.
And then, and then, of course, you know. As is, as is always present with these sorts of things, it's something that the council would have to budget for. Um, you know, I mean, i- i- as we come up on that season, you know, council sets the appropriations for. The entire year, so that would have to be a budgeted item.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
To clarify. Councilmember Lowry. It would, it, most of those awards are just kind of like crime stoppers. It's a prosecution. And conviction. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Very good. So it sounds like you're going to look at the policy?
Yeah.
Uh, look at state law, see what.
About a reward, yes.
About a reward, see what can and can't be done. And then get back to us. Okay, and then from that point, Councilmember Lowry, uh, whatever. Whatever Gus recommends, uh, then you can start forming that into your. The policy you want to implement and then we'll bring it back to council and we'll discuss and go forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, item. Nine five, establishing a youth advisory council. Considering the proposal for establishing a Lamarck Youth Council. Ms. McKenzie, you are back.
Uh, Council, I will entertain a motion.
Smooth. Well, I move that we approve this council. Need the advisory council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any, any discussion? Did you have something, Gus? I'm sorry.
Yes, um, we're going to need, so I think. Um. A- as far as the creation of it, we'll need an ordinance to do that, um, but, um, if what we could, um, is some guidance from you all. I, I know McKenzie put together a very comprehensive proposal, but is that, is that what y'all are thinking? Is it something? In, in between, just, just some guidance there?
Okay, so we, we, we made a motion to approve and we seconded, right?
Yeah.
So I guess council and discussion, uh, does any one of us have any? Apprehension or heartburn? Um, as it relates to the proposal Ms. McKenzie. Uh, gave us on, uh, the youth advisory council. Do we want it to be consistent with what? Uh, she submitted? Uh, do we want to differentiate from that? Do we want to alter that? One of the things we do know that we want to add is, uh, strong language as to this being a nonpartisan group. A group that will promote, uh, civic, uh, engagement. Basic democracy, right? We want to make sure that that's part of the bylaws. Council, do we have anything else we would like to add now? Or would we like this to be brought before us? Uh, so that we can look at it, uh, again and make. Uh, amendments to it at that time when it comes to us in an ordinance.
Yes, a- and both of those are, are permissible as well.
Okay. Any further additions?
I have some questions I never really got to ask at first. So. How are we going to get the sixty five percent that don't feel informed enough to participate in polit, politics to want to participate?
I think a lot of that is centered around just getting the word out, working with our PR team, but also emphasizing the benefits for. The youth and for the city combined, how that relationship between young people and the City of Lamarck is going to benefit both parties. Um, and as I mentioned, just spreading the word about that, similar to what we've done with the internship program.
You can also get with the student councils and counselors that are already involved in that to participate as well.
And then. How do you? For an eighteen to twenty-four-year-old to say. And I'll quote here because are dissatisfied with American democracy. And most of them have never traveled outside of their city, their state. Much less their country to go to someplace else and see what. What's out there. Um, never been somewhere where they looked at you and said, oh, you're an American. You don't understand what's going on. Um. You don't, don't know how we feel. It's. How do you, how can you? Try to explain to them what it's like? What democracy really is, or how? If you go to another country, they may look at you. As what everybody believes Americans feel. Just because you're not Japanese, but you're Korean inside that country. Have never experienced that true level of. Of. Of hatred for another human being just because they're a Muslim. In a Chinese country.
I, I can attest to that with my own experience working with the city. Um, like I mentioned before, a lot of that education comes with. Networking with people directly, um, learning directly from city leaders and community leaders and people who have different. Uh, beliefs and views and morals than you and finding a common ground between those, those two parties. A lot of the. From my own experience and from people that I know, um, and youth that I've engaged personally. A lot of that dissatisfaction comes with a lack of understanding, not just about. The policies and about the functionality of a municipality and state and national government. But about a misunderstanding between each other and a lack of education between each other and. What, how my values and my morals drive me versus how yours drive you. Um, and I think. A lot of that. Excuse me, a lot of that division between people and the said lack of understanding comes from. A need and a want to be understood. I come here. A- and I voice my opinions and I present this because I feel passionately about it and, um. Like I said, I want to be understood and the youth in this city want to be understood. So that education comes directly from networking with each other.
Good answer. Any, any more questions going?
Mayor, I just. Need some guidance here in this respect. We're going to possibly, this is, um, a recommendation, as I understand. Lead to follow up with an ordinance. Are we also going to be including it as a line item? Uh, the experience. From that I've seen in other cities. When I attended, it was line item financial.
Yeah.
And, uh, so.
I think so.
And Ms. Ms. McKenzie's working on it, but, um, one of the things that we talked about doing for consideration is. I have a sweater vest that I used for the similar program from the different one. She's looking at changing the logo. That's why she asked her input on logo, doing this in a totally different color. But this would be the general thing because something like this is sweater. But this would be the general thing because something like this sweater vest and you dressed up with just a simple white t-shirt, a simple button down, a polo, but dressed up with a pair of khakis and wear a pair of jeans. Uh, so that they can properly represent us when they go to different.
Yeah.
So there would be line item, you know, budget.
Line item. Bylaws. Um, I would suggest when we bring this back, a uh, one uh, appointment per council member and one alternate, uh, so that would be a total of ten youth. Along the same lines of how we did the uh, public safety committee. The alternate replaces the uh, person who they are coupled with via uh, council district. Any uh, any further discussion on nine five? Care, do we have a motion? There's a motion and second on the floor, uh, hearing no further discussion, we'll call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine six, thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Item nine six, employee insurance renewal, reviewing and renewal contract for employee insurance and next level prime documentation. There's Aaron. Hey, Aaron.
Counsel, first off, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity, President, today. We are excited to be here because um, we have some good news for you guys. Um, and it's definitely sunny in Lamarck. Things are going in the right direction for us, especially when we look at our insurance offerings. Today, no matter the outcome, Lamarck is winning. There are some important things that we're going to talk about today that directly impacts the health and well-being of our employees. And I am so excited to be standing next to my partners in this whole endeavor from the Texas Benefit Pool. You know, I I will tell you all, twenty years of doing this, I take a very poker face look when I'm dealing with um, my insurance brokers and also my insurance providers. I never want them to know that I'm I'm pleased. Donald has made it so difficult for me. And I'm glad. Um, and once again, Derek has also made it very difficult to maintain a poker face to where I can't even I can't keep it up anymore. So I'm going to give them the floor because they have some very important things because these gentlemen have really worked hard to number one, reduce our insurance costs, but also set us up for the future and really be a proactive partner. And I'm gonna go ahead and get Donald before.
Sorry, before you speak, can you uh, state your full name?
Uh, Donald Ford, Donald, Texas Health Benefits, uh, Seawish Mayor, uh, Council. But uh, I participate as your account executives that you guys keep on with Texas Health Benefit Pool. There's been a long road. We're we're hearing as Aaron mentioned, we're kind of where the s- the stars are aligned, so to speak. We've been Derek and I've been working closely with Aaron and um, our underwriter with this last year. One of the programs that we implemented about three years ago was a partnership with an urgent care center just down the street here in uh, Lake City. In that partnership, what it sets up is it's called direct primary care. Uh, if you're listening to the radio ground in Houston, you hear Kelsey Siebel, you hear some of the other big hospital networks talking about their direct primary care. Uh, with our model, it's with next level urgent care, but our goal is to be able to get your employees into next level urgent care, have access seven days a week, nine to nine, but at no cost to them. So you go to this next level urgent care, uh, you've got a situation going on on the weekend, you need to get stitches, or maybe you just need to go in for a checkup. You can do that after hours, you don't miss work. Uh, by doing that, this partnership with next level comes at no cost. So you never, one of their things is you never pull out your wallet. The other piece of that partnership is uh, it's kind of an added benefit. There's a lot of folks, and I do this a lot, I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-seven. And when I speak to folks and do open enrollment meetings, I'm looking at this guy, the city covers his plan, but I can't afford, I can't even think about putting my wife on the plan or my kids. It's it's affordable, I won't have a checklet. So these folks that are, you know, if we were to implement this plan, these folks that don't have coverage for their families can also take next level, go take their family to next level at no cost either. So their otherwise eligible dependents, your legal spouse, your children of age twenty-six can also participate and have that, I need to call it a benefit, but that membership at next level at no cost. So one of the obstacles has been is the cost. That averages about sixty dollars per employee per month. So how do we get there? That's that's a lot of money, right, from per employee per month. So as we were working with underwriting this year, our underwriting formula came out better, our average increase to our customers over the pool was about two percent, correct? It's about two percent of, again, being able to negotiate with underwriting, um, y'all skimmed out at a minus eight percent. Uh, average industry industry average is about seven or eight, uh, medical trend is about eight percent increase. So basically, we came in with a minus, taking you back several years in cost. And then by doing that, I also negotiated a little extra in there so we could get down and be able to cover the next level cost. Uh, that sixty dollars, we fell about five dollars short, so uh, I think it's about half a percent increase for the year. Um, I don't think, you've been doing this for a long time, but you ever hear that your annual uh, insurance benefits are going to go up half a point. Uh, so by implementing this program, uh, you have that extra coverage for those employees that can't afford the coverage for their family and then also those that can, they can still take their family over to next level at no cost.
Are you are you saying that this next level program for families that can't afford dependent coverage?
It benefits those folks. So if you even have coverage, let's say I'm covered here with Texas Health Benefit Pool and my wife works for the state. Uh, we need to go to next level. Hey, honey, you're on my plan. I could take you to the next level. You can have stitches, you can have x-rays, you can get immunizations, you can have your annual physical, even though you're not on my plan, I can still take you there at no cost.
So even though they're not on Lamarck's plan, if they're on this next level.
Hard to believe is like, you could even take those that aren't covered to for the membership, it includes those people.
So if they're on the next level plan, even though they're not on Lamarck's plan, they can still go get urgent care.
That's correct.
If they are a member.
Mayor, um, that that they would also be able to get preventative and primary care as well as the urgent care.
So I want to paint a picture, because I've been doing this for a long time. And it's not my proudest moment, but about ten years ago, I had an employee in bed, walking no longer. Hey, you have insurance, why aren't you going? I can't afford it. It's too high. And it was, we were self, we were a self-funded fund. And I kept talking to her, hey, go. We had a barrier. There are people right now that are walking around. And unfortunately, they don't have the funds to be able to afford because it's either I'm going to pay the thirty dollar or in some case, I mean, we're blessed with the thirty dollar co-pay to see a primary care physician. Um, we're gonna pay the thirty dollar uh, primary care physician, where I'm gonna pay for my my child's school lunch. I know as a parent and as a single parent, what my choice has always been, I paid my child's school lunch. So that's that's the reality and the impact of a program like this, where it truly is a way to help us to avoid these kind of hard decisions that people are having to make more and more. The economy and the inflation is rough, right? We can all agree. And I just look at the cost of babies, okay? Babies is like eight dollars almost for the good stuff, and I'm definitely not eating the good stuff. But I mean, the reality is that these are hard choices that people have to make, and if we can have a part to play and someone not having to make that hard choice and that hard decision, there's a great opportunity for us, because not always are we in a situation where we can take a savings and apply it to a program to help us afford it. The good news is, and this is the good news here, is that if we do this program, it's going to lower our overall spend cost. And that is going to equate to even further, you gotta be a visionary with me, you gotta go down this road with me. But this will equate to savings down the road, and I would like Donald to talk about that because he has some real world instances at other municipalities that have brought this to their people, and it has been phenomenal. It's been a game changer.
So about three years ago, we started this pilot program, the city of Mambo uh, was saying it's a really difficult decision, decisions, their costs were extremely high. Uh, they're trying to figure out, what are we gonna do? You know, all you do is keep tweaking the deductible higher, 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 looking for benefit. They pay the money, it's just like this vicious cycle. So we booked them on this program, they partnered with us, uh, they added the next level, so now their employees could start going and taking advantage. And they were driving fifteen, sixteen, seventeen miles from Mambo out to Pearland to do this. And as it built momentum, we see their claims dollars start to turn, their ER access, which is really high for most folks, people go to the ER all the time. Uh, their ER access dropped significantly, I don't remember the exact number, but it was increasing. We've been Derek and I, Derek and I have been doing a study on Mambo. But their claims have really flipped completely where their claims are lowered. The big thing is with health insurance is those, you know, we have uh, wellness screenings and and bonus things, uh, no matter how many wellness programs you participate, they're all very important. But that cancer, that heart attack, those situations, they're gonna come up in a population, that's just a numbers thing. So what you want to do is get your, the rest of your population healthy, keep them to stay healthy, so that you do have those big impacts, a transplant, a sick baby, uh, your plan can absorb those shocks. Uh, the good news, you guys are with the pool, so the pool helps absorb some of that, but as you get your population healthy, uh, it helps absorb the shocks, but what's also happening, what I've discovered is, you're going to next level, they provide this reporting, it shows this is, you know, we've provided this many primary care visits, this many immunization, this many stitches, x-rays, lab work, and they put a dollar in it. So if I go to your utilization experience or one of my cases, I could see, you know, here's your claims X, and then I see a hundred thousand dollars would have, that went over to next level urgent care and care would have been against your claims. So your claims experience is climbing, still climbing, supplanting. So here with the next level program, your claims are climbing downwards. So and again, we're keeping everybody healthy and helping them stay healthy and get care, but the big thing is, we are keeping those claims off of your experience. It's almost like a credit rating. Um, you know, every year we look at it, you know, how's your credit running this year? Well, you have this much ability to plan where you paid the premiums and this many claims paid out. So those claims, even if your guys are going, and we we encourage them, we help coach them to go to the next level. As they uh, review the decision increases, you're backing your claims down the other direction. Uh, city of Mambo's done it. I added, last year we had a Bajoria CAD, uh, County and Central District. Those guys have been champion, just in their first year, they were driving all the way up to Lake Jackson, using that next level uh, facility. And they've done really well. I mean, they, the employees love it. Uh, their HR director says, I've never seen anything like this. My employees usually aren't excited about anything. They're grateful we have it, they don't miss work, they go after hours, seven days a week, I mean, the list goes on and on.
Mayor, if I can just comment real quick, one of the things that we've noticed from our staff is a lot of them don't take advantage of whether it's the employee, employee family, employee child, or the employee spouse plan. A lot of the employees do not take advantage of a lot of these options that we have because there is the fear of the co-pay, anything else that comes with it. This is one way to stop that from happening, to encourage them to participate more. We did the math at approximately five hundred and fifty-one, five hundred and fifty-two dollars more per month total, um, which we normally are increases away more than that, so roughly for under seven thousand dollars a year, uh, if you take that number times twelve. We would be able to bring this additional benefit. More importantly, I've been in conversations with um, um, Texas Health Pool about the fact that the the program is growing so much. We being central county, one of the things that we've talked about is actually them opening a branch in Lamarck so that we could also be that central hub for this entire district. We've had several conversations about that. We're excited to hopefully have a site visit with the organization soon. So our employees, not only would that be a benefit to us, but then soon when the Galveston and or Texas City and or Hitchcock or some of the other shining cities decide to join this plan as well, because we know it's a matter of time, they may also want to also come to our city to do so. So it, the overall benefit in the long run will be greater. Um, it's too soon to say that right now, but we are excited about bringing to offer our our employees and in this case, their families extensively greater care for not that much more um, than what we've experienced each year. And year over year, our insurance costs have gone up, so to see it go up this little and still be able to add so much more is something that we needed to bring to your attention right.
Is is next level the name of the clinic?
Yes, sir. That's not even their business, called next level urgent care, and it truly is next level. I don't know if you've ever had to go to use one of their facilities, but they are next level, I mean, they're they're very there, I mean, the experience there is really good, the facility is really nice, they take good care of you. Again, their hours are great. So the other benefit is, we're so blessed in the Houston area because uh, there are another cities, they have some in San Antonio, some in Austin, uh, and they're growing. But here in the Houston metro area, there's thirty-two facilities. So if you're up in Beaumont visiting a friend, you're down at Lake Conroe at the lake, something happens, or you're down over near Katy, anywhere in the Houston metro area, uh, there's one within fifty minutes of you. So again, you're up at the lake in Conroe, something happened, hey, there's one like ten minutes away, let's get in there, get those stitches or whatever happened. Uh, you get care seven days a week at no cost to you.
What what which is the closest to this location?
It's gonna be Lake City. It's about what, fifteen minutes up the road, maybe twelve?
And really, this conversation is about two years in the making. And and I really do think it's perhaps the best thing in healthcare going right now, especially in the Houston area. Um, one more time, employees are covered um, in an economical way that partially takes care of the dependent problem, the cost of dependent care. Um, the employee cost, if anybody doesn't notice, about six hundred dollars per employee per month, that that's the going rate about now. Um, if you're gonna add your family, that's eleven hundred dollars. For those that have a choice of having no coverage, we're never gonna encourage anyone not to insure their family. But if you don't have coverage, you at least have primary preventative and urgent care without ever going in your wallet. That by itself messes me up. I'm like, hey, let me say, did I say that right? That's exactly what it says over and over again. They can go over and over again. Strains, sprains, fractures, lacerations, women's care, men's care, all those things, x-rays, cuts, I mean, uh, we call it, uh, when you break your arm. All all those things, and and not a pocket, it's like, where you been my whole life? And so the thought that we can bring it to to Lamarck, I think you guys have been exceptional in in entertaining the conversations to to bring it for retention, for being able to keep employees to have a a package that says, hey, this is what is different about Lamarck. Hey, we got a package you might want to consider. And so as we bring that to you, I mean, it's it's nothing in my mind, it's, you have a good plan. This is a wraparound that helps with that as an entry level to that. If you you have a good plan, but if if they don't have, if they can't take advantage of it, you have the next level option. So the question is, you know, to next level or not to next level? That's kind of hit, you already have the plan. But we strongly recommend and highly.
So kind of off of what Aaron was talking about, and you kind of where Derek's leading off, I think I could come in and talk to your boy, say, hey, you you want to sign up, here's your benefits, here's how, here's how they work, uh, who do you want to put on your plan? And it's not a problem, it's not just here, you're anywhere in the state of Texas. Uh, I'm gonna sign myself up, but are you kidding? I can't put my wife on, I don't want to have a checklist for my kids, forget it. So that's the guy that I see every day that I do meetings with and it, you know, it just kills those like, okay, well, we got you covered because the city's covering your part. Uh, but guess what? You can now start taking your wife down the street to get care or your kids down the street to get care and at no cost. That's either the first win right out of the gate. Uh, the other one is they're they're convenient, located all over the the city. Their hours, again, my customers over at Bajoria CAD, they're noticing that their employees are not taking enough of work to go to the doctor. They're going, I could do that on Saturday, I could do that when I got to work at five, I could be in Lake Jackson in fifteen minutes and have my my visit there. Uh, so there's just and then on the back, on the back end of that, as I've been studying this, as Aaron mentioned, we're kind of buying our claims down. So that experience, it's going there, didn't hit the doctor's office, the Blue Cross, you know, you still have the benefit, the big Blue Cross thing, it's beautiful. But there's a claim that's involved with that. So they send a claim in, we pay it, it goes against your credit rating. Uh, so as you're going to next level, those are not hitting your claims experience. So that's the far back end. And it's just kind of like, as you started, it's just kind of hard to believe, but it's it's a great program, uh, top notch. They have a great team. We meet with your team, would meet with our teams every month, we show uh, reporting on, you know, how it was utilized, how many people went in for urgent care, how many people went in for shots, annual physicals, uh, x-rays, lab work, everything they do, um, they'll give us a report and they'll go, they'll review it with us, uh, tell them how it was, tell us how it was used, where the opportunity is, they also put a cost on it. So what the, that service put a cost versus what you paid for, and then they give you a service value. One of the things that I'm really excited about is they have a performance guarantee. So let's just say the program costs us, and I'll put a number, a hundred thousand dollars, but you only use seventy-five thousand dollars with the services. Their service guarantee says, we'll refund you that difference. So, you know, they'll, at the end of when they settle up, it, well, you guys didn't go, uh we'll give you that cost difference. So it's kinda.
And that's and that's passed down to our employees?
No, sir. That's back to the city.
There there are two downsides to it. I'll give you this, you know, there's always why you should, your theories is what what people have concerns. Um it doesn't cover emergency care. This is not something that says, hey, um it's gonna pick up your emergency care to go to. That's not it. But you're vulnerable to that anyways. You're vulnerable to all of it, but at least with 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 next level, the preventative, primary and urgent care is taken care of. And then they have their own doctors. You go, you go to their clinic, they they treat you there. Um and some people, hey, I don't get to go to my doctor. Well, if you didn't have coverage. You didn't have a doctor. If you go to the doctor, and I've done this with my wife and my daughter now. Um next level has become the primary care for us because it was so convenient and the care was so good. That that that's not what I heard. That's 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 what I know. And so for those that would say, I don't see my doctor in those cases. I don't know how much of an issue that will be simply because the care will at least have you having some conversation at your own house.
Um my last question for you guys is going back to this, the reason that we're able to do this. Uh you said that our uh health uh insurance premium costs. Rolls about half a point. Did I hear someone say?
If we did the next.
We did a negative eight. Well, we did a negative eight, right? And then if we did next level, it would be half a point.
At negative eight, I'm talking to Caesar, I'm talking to Caesar and Aaron and Derek and one, it's not good enough. So I went back to the underwriter, which was a difficult wrestling match. She gave us another.
Negative nine?
Pardon me?
Negative nine?
So we got us to negative nine. Uh and that's where she left off. So we're we're just about five dollars short where I would need you guys. To cover that different cost. So it's about a quarter point increase for the year, which is unheard of.
Yeah. So so my question is, how do we get to a negative nine?
How do we get there?
The loss experience last year was better. The the claims did not.
Okay.
Were not as high as the year before.
Counsel, do we have any other questions for uh? For Aaron and and uh? Texas Health?
So, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Ross and then Mayor Proton.
Um so is this ten thousand two hundred dollars a month or is that a year that we're getting charged?
That's gonna be a month. That's gonna be your about sixty dollars per employee per month. Uh times uh your hundred and seventy.
And then how much is it going to be? Cost an employee for this per month?
Zero. That that's the total cost. So again, it's still part of your benefit program. Like right now, we have surgery plus as your benefit. For surgeries, you use surgery plus, they waive your deductible and you're out of pockets. You go have surgery for free. So that covers that in. But what about the the four program, you know, the the day-to-day primary care stitches? If you ever raised kids, you know, they wait till Friday at four o'clock, get a fever or a runny nose, certainly, you know, get sick. So again, it covers those those situations.
So the. The employer group medical plan, are we getting rid of that or is that an extension of?
It'd be an extension. So if you're ready, I mentioned that you still have the big Blue Cross umbrella. You have that full coverage, something catastrophic. I need to go to MD Anderson. All that's covered on you. You have a great benefit plan. What happens is that just before that, you know, and that's probably ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of us that. You know, we go all year, it's so dark, we have an earache, we get the flu, kids need stitches, runny nose, all that. But you know, you're getting, you're you're spending money as you go there uh along the years. So it it helps it helps cover that piece.
And I want you to think of this as. She's gonna go back to my my roots, right? Louisiana, right? Uh you go over and then talk about that bigger, right? But in Louisiana, we call it land yeah, right? So you just think of that, this extra pro is of our land yeah. It's great. It's wonderful what we have. But here's the land yeah to make it even better.
I'm always kinda erring on the side of caution and um I looked at some reports today with one of our customers. And one of the numbers that I monitor is, you know, that was just thirdly. The question is, what would you have done if you had not come here to urgent care? I would have gone to the ER. That number's usually high. Uh again, we're reducing that cost significantly for you guys. The other one that scares devil out of me is. And it's usually a high number. I wouldn't have gone anywhere. So that guy that's sick, ticking time bomb, goes back to work, goes home. And it's frustrating. It's getting worse and worse and worse because I went nowhere. I would have just went home. Uh it troubles me because that's a different situation. It's sad because the guys or that person's not having a good quality life. And then that could turn into a catastrophic situation. Again, end up in the hospital, more autophagy employee, higher cost to the city. Again. That guy went to the next level and got the care that he needed or she needed.
And also, um, Mr. Ross, um. By doing this, you'll have one of the absolute best packages in terms of healthcare anywhere.
That's what city of Mabul constantly talks about is we use it as a recruiting tool. They're going, oh, we also have this benefit. When when they're recruiting employees, their PD, they're going, you know, we have benefits, you know, they're competing with the big city, just like you guys are. Going, oh, wait a minute, let me show you this stuff. And that's usually a game changer when they're talking to recruiting employees to come and stay with them. Uh they're seeing the the turnover is a lot less.
I, I'm sorry. I will disagree a little bit with you there.
Awesome.
Because uh I have some of the best socialized healthcare on the planet, being a a veteran of the United States military. So. So when I look at, we're paying a sixty dollar for them to have this next level, but then. An employee that a brand new employee is paying five hundred and fifty dollars, I'm assuming a month for their. I mean, I think. We need to try to figure out something better to drop that down. That would, that would improve the health of our employees. Paychecks and their cost of living better.
Well, we have. One of the things that they've done in order, and this is a good thing, whether we choose this program or not. Today, we are leaving out of here with a decrease. And that is directly. Equating to what the cost of services is for this program. But there's a valuable reason why we do it. Because I gotta tell you, there's a lot of people out there. They cannot afford to do the basic necessities.
Understand it completely. So if we're leaving with a. It looks like a fifty dollar a month decrease for just employees, oh, right?
About fifty-fiveish.
Fifty-fiveish. I mean. Yeah, it's a decrease and and overall that will be a pay raise to somebody that is getting that. But I think. Think we could probably do better for some of our our employees that that could. And I I agree that your next level is is a hundred percent better. And once we get, if we get a clinic in the city of Lamarck. It'll be better because they don't have to drive to League City. But I think we as a city could. Possibly get that better. And that's just me, I think. Five hundred fifty, five hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents a month for for health insurance is is a little much personally.
So you're talking about the employee coverage?
Yes.
So.
Just overall, I mean, I know as a young, as a. A young family person, if I had to take sixteen hundred and seven dollars twenty-two cents out of my paycheck a month. That would be painful.
And and I've been that guy. I've had, my first son was born in nineteen ninety-four, and I've been that fourth tier family coverage. I still have one daughter on the plan. Uh and I totally feel that. A lot of them blessed have been able to cover my family. But the folks I talk to, the city covers your employees. I mean, that's part of your budget. You pay that that five hundred or six hundred dollars that we're talking about. That guy's good. Your employees go home and they have coverage. The folks we're trying to reach or get care for. Um and get better quality lives. They they go home and they have spouses, they have children. They're also, you know, and then their benefits too. They're spending less money out of pocket for day-to-day stuff. And again, they have, you know what, hey, I could take you if you get the flu. Everything is short of an emergency room. I mean, one of us mentioned. Uh that's there anyway. If I have a heart attack, there's a situation that's gonna happen. Um but that's not the guy I'm trying to reach out to. I'm trying to talk everybody behind that, which is probably about, like I said, ninety-nine, ninety percent of the rest of the group.
And I would agree with you also that healthcare is crazy expensive. There's no doubt about that. But if you were going around to other groups and and find out kind of what some of those rates are, some of them are incredibly more expensive than. What's even here. And so we could, we could talk about the 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 cost of healthcare overall or in general across the state. But in particular with Lamarck, the decrease, the experience that you had last year, the utilization, this is a good year. This is a good time. And so the hope would be if you're gonna strive to do it now because. If there was a ten percent increase and you're talking next level, that's probably a no right at the gate. But in this case, with almost the same dollars, you can still add this number. And for those guys that can't. Uh afford the 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 dependent care, at least they have three or four. Urgent care, primary and preventative, alternative care, at zero dollars to them.
I've seen you at TML conferences. You're familiar. You're with the benefits pool.
Yes, sir.
Who are you with?
I was also the benefits pool, but I don't go to those conferences. I face to face, boots on the ground with you guys.
Okay, so you are with the, you're the same team. And procedurally, Aaron. Last year, we had a brokerage company, uh Nick Long's group. That served as our broker, brought us the recommendation that the. The Blue Cross Blue Shield policy that was offered by the Texas Health Pool was the best. So my question, number one question is. Do we have an obligation to bid this out?
May I, may I kinda help answer that? Just a question, uh uh Mayor Proton. That was two years ago when uh Mr. Long last came before us. Uh last year, the decision was made to uh release that relationship. It was with a company called Gallagher.
I remember that, yeah.
Um so that was seized about two years ago. Last year, we've been direct with 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 the pool since last year. I I don't have the numbers in front of me as to what the savings was, but we were able to get the same, if not better, service. Without having the actual um. A middle person, if you will, that that was worked with. That was one of the recommendations that Suzie made two budget cycles ago. Uh that that was brought to us as far as a cost savings because we noticed two years ago then that it was gonna be a pretty big hike in our insurance cost for the employees. That was brought to you two years ago. Last year, we followed the same concept. And this year, it's time to renew again. So this will now be the third time that we would be looking at this because after two years ago, that decision was made. Or brought to council for for the actual recommendation. I have to research what meeting that was, but that's something that we so and and brought forward then.
Mr. State Manager, simple question. We'll go back to this. Do we have an obligation to bid out? This, 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 this.
So uh public entities, tax base entities. Have to go out to bid every three years or so. You know, go out and shop the market, you've got to go to mass trap and so on. So when you enter to your interlocal agreement with the Texas Health Benefits School.
Right.
It's circum, obviously circumvented, but it released you of that obligation and have to go out at all time. Because with the pool, we do that for you. Actually, we went out to, again, we just renewed our contract with Blue Cross. Should we go back and look at the United Healthcare's, the Blue Crosses of the world? And show us what you got, bring it to the table, who's got the best network, who's got the best pricing. Again, this time, Blue Cross did that. So that kept you from having to spend money on a consultant, on a broker, go through all that headache and labor intensive work. Uh hey, uh TML or Texas Health Benefits did that for us. So again, you don't have to have or hire a broker to do that. We did that for you. So with that interlocal agreement, back to your question, is no, you don't like to do that.
It's a choice, but it's not an obligation. Um chapter one seventy-two as well allows it to happen. It's just governmental to governmental, nonprofit to to the city in this case. Um if you choose to, of course, that's that's an option. But it it's not a requirement because it's.
Chapter one seventy-two, what? The government code?
Joe, uh counsel.
Excuse me. Let me finish my question because I'm I'm a roll here. Okay. Gus can appreciate that. So the, so the um. You're. But but number one, I don't, I don't think we've ever had clarity with regard to that one issue. Uh I'm I'm. At least I didn't recognize that. I remember Nick withdrawing. I remember the letter. But I don't remember the transition to utilizing the health pool. Uh for 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 the insurance. That's number one. And I don't need an answer now, I'm just saying that that I I find that lacking. Uh number two. I don't understand the relationship with this next level. Next level is now a third party, correct? And it's what's the relationship between next level and Blue Cross Blue Shield, if any at all? None at all.
So next level has a contract, like right now, you got your employees, government's still down the street and they're co-pay seventy-five dollars. They're in network provider. So we've got a another contractor already agreed, but what's next level?
Uh no, no, go back. You 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 you're going very fast. Say that again.
So next level urgent care is a urgent care in the community. They have a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh Blue Cross PPO Network. It provides services. Your employees can go there at seventy-five dollar co-pay.
Okay. Um, all right. Now, what so, it's a, it's part of the PPO network? And. So what changed that relationship?
Next level can is also one of our vendors. Like we have uh our pharmacy business. We use Navitas to provide the pharmacy benefit services.
Okay.
So we have a relationship with them. Um we have another program called, I mentioned Surgery Plus. Uh nobody around here has that. So if one of your employees needs major surgery, they pick up the phone and call Surgery Plus and say, hey, my doctor says I need that knee replacement. Um but I've got a five thousand dollar out of pocket. Surgery Plus sets that up for you, sends you into Houston for to a center of excellence and waves your out of pocket. So I can go into Houston or. So another place, uh top notch, uh center of excellence and have surgery and no cost.
And those, those, those relationships are unique to the Texas Health Pool.
Correct.
Okay, that's a, that's a plus on that side.
So a few years back, next level came to us and say, hey, we have this direct primary care idea. We want, you know, so to build up for you to offer your customers for their employees to come to us at no cost. Like, wait a minute, that didn't make sense. So again, you have that direct primary care. If you just wanna use them for bloody noses and stitches, that's fine. But what we're seeing is both discussing with her coming in and using them for annual physicals. I'm seeing in the reporting where the younger crowd, the. The your employees that are like twenty to to the under forty are going there because those types of folks or those folks in that age group. Don't have established relationships with doctors. They just go when they're sick. Usually end up in the ER. So I'm starting to see more of those guys going there for annual physicals, establishing with their doctors. Um the other nice thing about next level is if you like that doctor there, you wanna establish. When you have to go again, you just call and say, hey, is Doctor Schmidt gonna be there today? They'll say, oh, no, he's down in Mabul today, but he went back on Tuesday. You wanna set up an appointment? Or if it's just a, hey, it's a nerve, did I have an ear infection? Come on in.
Where is the the next level clinic in League City?
League City?
But to your point, just like we use IMED provision, use standard for the line. We use next level for the direct care. It's just one more piece that you can add to your options. Um that's a that's made available to you. We love it. Therefore, we're bringing it out and trying to let everybody know, hey, there's another option for healthcare. You can choose to.
Uh I I and I understand that I've been a healthcare advocate out for a long while. And I'm older than you guys in this area involved. Um. The the issue for me is not to confuse the insured as to. As to um what services are available, especially for your family. So I'm a, I'm an employee of the city of Lamarck. And um I have determined that I'm cannot afford the additional premium. For my two children. Okay, I've I've determined that. Uh what you're saying that should we go along and accept this? Is you're saying. In in this presentation, at least, don't worry about that. Don't worry about that. Your child can still have access to healthcare. To healthcare uh without the payment of any deductible, correct? Uh at this next, next care, next, next gen, was it?
We're not saying don't worry about it. It's it's not okay.
That's what, that's what I, that's the method that I've heard.
That's why I wanna be real clear with the point. We want you to insure your family. But if not, there is another option available to you than to go out with nothing.
All right, that that's what I would like, clarity in the marketing, right?
Oh, yeah.
We we wanna be clear to 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 people that. That it's important, if you can, to insure your family.
Absolutely. Without a doubt, no question.
And and because basically what you have here is you almost say, you can go establish the same relationship. With the federally qualified health center that's coastal health. with the federally qualified health center that's coastal health and wellness, right? That that's it's 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 there. It's available. I can take, I don't insure my my family, but I can go over there and utilize them as a backup. That's what some families do do in this community. Okay, there there and that's available too, right? On that side.
The city is covering your your healthcare. The hope is that you can cover your family as well. If that's not an option, we got to wafer to get three of those four taken care of. And even if you do have your family on there, if you go to this next level, which is an option here in Lamarck, there's a level of care and convenience that will rival what you're getting where you're going. And then you have a choice.
And here's the the part that I don't want anybody to be confused with. God forbid you take your child that you have not insured to next care. And they're diagnosed with some childhood cancer. They don't have coverage. Correct?
Correct.
They don't have coverage.
But we that's what we said from the beginning. If you have no coverage, there's nothing.
That and and but because you began your presentation with saying we have access to tertiary care. I'm writing these things down. We have access to tertiary care, you mentioned, okay? You you said that. You said that earlier. So I want a realistic presentation of the information that we have. Okay, the the fact is our base, our base health program is the Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's that's that is, that's that's endorsed by the Texas Health Pool. That's what we as a community have found beneficial to all of us. Now, as as an as supplement supplemental care, that is not insurance. Let's make that clear. That's not insurance. We have this availability to you that on with extended hours. That's what I'm picking up, right? They're closed probably at ten o'clock or nine o'clock or something like that, right? And open on weekends as well, too. Well, you have access to urgent care. To be clear, if the child requires emergency care, well, they can't be denied that by going to a hospital, emergency care. But if they don't have insurance, they certainly can't be denied or the parent will assume the financial obligation for the for the healthcare charges of that child without insurance. Okay?
Right.
So so I think all of this, as we look at this, must be very carefully communicated on on this side, all right? Healthcare is not a.
Present this because I could be held liable.
Exactly. And that's and I like your enthusiasm, but healthcare is not a sales pitch for a Kirby vacuum cleaner. All right. And that's that's where I, that's the only point I want to say. I welcome the additional of
Sure.
supplemental pluses that we might have. And and I can appreciate that, but let's be very clear until.
From the start of this program with me in next level, the answer to your question, that location is twenty-five sixty League City Parkway.
Oh, okay. Ninety-nine.
So I want to put a human face on this because it needs to have a meaning, but and not only to stand up here and be that human face on this. I have a child that I raised. I cannot afford to take that child who's nineteen years old. I can't deny him all my insurance. And that's God's honest truth. And God struck me down right here. Now, the reality is this, I pray every day that my child is going to stay wealthy, wealthy in lives. But the the absolute truth is, I don't get anything from the state, I don't get anything from the mother or the father. I take care of these kids and I've been taking care of these kids. And there's many people in this city that are in my same situation that have to make hard choices. And I'm speaking as a parent here. Now, step outside. I'm not AR new year. I'm not your HR person. I am the parent of Trey Rowe. And he's a good young man. And unfortunately, I can't afford to pay for his health insurance. And that is the truth. We know where I'm at with that. So I would hope they don't consider that. And if they don't, let me tell you something. The way here is this. We are at an eight percent decrease. That's amazing. That's a good thing. And the good thing is, we have a little bit of land to throw on this amazing good thing. And that's that's where I stand with it. And I really appreciate your time and thank you all so much.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ms. Turner. Can you reach the microphone, ma'am? Thank you.
Okay, so I attend the Government Finance Office Association monthly meetings. I'm the secretary for that organization. And this past week, we had our meeting and there are finance directors in there. We're sitting there, we're doing our finance talk. And then we get on the subject of budgets because everybody's budget, doing budgets right now. So we went around the room, healthcare came up, healthcare costs. And each city was telling how much theirs went up. Ours was the only one that went down. And I was in the room with Mambo, League City, Alvin, you know? So just to put that in perspective, and then I was sitting right next to the finance director of Mambo. And I said, hey, we were thinking about this program called Next Level. And she said, oh, yeah, we have that. She said, and they love it. Employees love it. So let's just give you a little perspective on what the feedback I've got. So we're one of the few cities of healthcare that went down. They were talking fifteen, ten percent in other cities.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So so.
Oh, that was that was Miss Yan. I'm sorry.
So I'm so what I was saying earlier, I was trying to say earlier is that in these risk pool, they're similar to HGC cooperative partnerships. When you don't have to do the bid because the bid has already been done. And so that's similar. When I was direct to public housing, we had the same thing with the with the pool and their job was to find the best deals for the cities. But my question to you is, is is in Mr. Hoosier's place, because I think what 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 Councilman Compreon is good at is making it easy for our constituents to understand what we're doing, right? Because you all know your work, you know, those of us that that are related with pools, but for the average citizen and to our new employees or people that are listening that may want to work for Lamarck. So in in his case, how, he said he can't afford the regular insurance, which is the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and your insurance is the supplemental insurance. What would he have to pay if he if he if we did have next level for his child that that's nineteen that has no insurance?
For primarily preventative and urgent care. He's still vulnerable to the emergency fees.
Okay.
But for those other thirty, he could go to the next level and have a zero dollar. There's he would have costs more.
So he could actually pay for his being the employee, just one person. And because he has next level now, he can his 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 child can go for preventative care.
Yes, we're good. He's not paying for his, the city's picking it up.
Okay.
There's no cost to him in that example that you just gave.
If we if the city picks up next level.
City picked up his his healthcare plan. And then it's the uh next level is added to that. In that case, he's he's protected in that regard. He doesn't pay anything out of his pocket. And then when he goes to next level, no one will ask for a credit card or money at all.
So our health insurance is that we got to pay three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents for our Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're going to pick up the extra sixty for next level. Is that what the proposal is? So it'll be the city's contribution will be three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents? I'm just looking between our Texas Health Benefits Pool and.
So right now, or with the with the proposal, your employee only coverage or what the city would cover would be five hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. So that's the part that you guys were going to cover. Right now, your rate's five ninety-eight seventy-two. So with the proposed renewal, it's down to five forty-four. So that's where we're trying to squeeze in, keep you in budget with little to almost no increase and pull in that next level, have the same cost that you've had this year, have another good year next year, and then start this program on next level to start moving your claims back to the negative side or back the other way. So again, with back to your question, so for the proposed renewal will be five forty-four eighty-four. And again, again, the city covers that. It would be no cost to me.
So the city of Lamarck covers for employees only a hundred percent of healthcare?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you love this?
That's true.
What are the stipulations on people that can be added, right? Because
To the regular plan or the?
To the next level.
To the next level. The term I point is your otherwise eligible dependents. So they would have had to been eligible to be on here. So if I've got a house with twelve people in it, and they have to be my legal spouse or my children up to age twenty-six, the kid that I could have added, but I can't afford it, I could take him. Now, at my house, I've got a twenty-eight-year-old, but just moved back in, just my life.
So so rule of thumb, rule of rule of thumb, they would they would have to be eligible to be added to
Correct.
the regular health insurance program. Okay.
I have folks ask, well, I'm taking care of my mom. She's living with me. That's pretty common. Grandma's not eligible. My wife is, and again, my my two kids that are under the age of forty-six or up to forty-six.
Don't don't call me on this, but I think it's the page six of the eligibility guide that the only guy, it it shows who are the eligible dependents. All of those folks are eligible for next level, whether they're covered on your plan or not. But if if they're on your plan, that's great. If not, just because they fall into that definition, they're they're covered through the next whole piece. That page is what we need to look at.
Do you recall, and I don't have it up, you should have done a better job in pulling up the information from. But on the the information from Blue Cross Blue Shield, we had a schedule that also included the cost for dependents. When when will we, do you recall what?
Yes, sir. So right now, your current plan, if you want to add your spouse, it's going to be twelve hundred and fifteen dollars minus the five ninety-eight the city pays. So you just do the math there. If you want to add just children, that'll be a thousand fifty-three minus the five ninety-eight. If you have family covered like I do, it's seventeen sixty-six minus the.
The new is going to be sixteen.
So your newer with with the the proposed plan, your family cover to be sixteen hundred and seven dollars, twenty-two cents. You back out to part the city covers, that means about eleven or or about a thousand dollars to do family coverage.
To do family with.
Including myself and all, you know, my wife can cover any kids I have.
So if I just had one child, it would be it would be that.
That's common to your pricing.
Yeah, okay.
Council, do you have any more questions? Here, where are we? And so I will entertain a motion to move forward with this program as a pilot program. One year and then we come back and and have a report. Is that is that fair, Aaron?
Well, I'm just giving you secondary motions. I mean, I say employee, thank you so much for thinking about it. Whatever they'll choose.
Absolutely, absolutely. I I will entertain that motion.
I so moved that we entertain this as a pilot program for a year. I'd really like to sit down and talk with you, Aaron, more about benefits with the city because reading this, when I'm looking at this, it says that employee pays five hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And now that's what kind of threw me off there.
Sure. That's that's the actual cost of the premium.
Right.
The what's not illustrated, there is a part two guys covering.
Yeah.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, aye, in opposed? Item nine seven, budget calendar, amending the proposed budget calendar.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Uh, for city council budget meetings and public hearings. I believe the calendar that we approved, Ms. Nance, one of our members has a training that has to be attended.
Yes. So the initial calendar was approved back in, I want to say April. We do have new council members. Since then, there are required trainings that all new council members have to go to. And it just so happens to fall during that first week of budget hearings. So that training is scheduled for August eighth and ninth with obviously August, uh, August seventh being a travel day that afternoon. So just keep that in mind. But we typically schedule five budget workshop days. We don't always use all five, but we like to keep that option open to you guys. If you would like, if you think you can do it in four, then we can just cancel that one day and leave it at four. Or if you want to reschedule that fifth day, we could do that as well.
Yeah, let's give us some dates to accommodate the travel schedule as well as five days. It's always rather better to be safe than sorry.
Absolutely. So we started off with August fifth, sixth, and eighth. That's a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. We typically skip that Wednesday. I'm going to look at you because it's your it's your schedule we're accommodating for. So sorry. I don't know if you guys want us to do like a short day on that Wednesday or do three days on the second week? And two days on the first week, it's up to.
So the travel is the first week?
Yes, the travel is, like I said, the training is the eighth and the ninth, but we do try to give at least a half day the day before to travel there.
So we do the fifth and the sixth, have the rest of that week off. That'll accommodate training. And then come back that next Monday, Tuesday, and the Thursday after. What are those days?
Twelve, thirteenth, which are already on the schedule, and I would add the fifteenth in place of the eighth.
So Council, the only item before us on the adjustment is to remove the eighth and replace the eighth with the fifteenth. Does Council have any heartburn on that?
Just mayor, on private health matter, I do have an unexpected health appointment that I had to schedule for the sixth. So that morning, I won't be participating in your budget meeting.
Which one?
On the Tuesday at six, I think you mentioned.
Yes, the original dates are the were the fifth and the sixth.
My appointment's at eight AM at the medical center in Houston. So I'd be back probably at least by afternoon, certainly if not earlier.
If you can make it back for the afternoon, I I believe we can proceed on that one. Council, any any questions on the fifth, sixth, twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth?
And this from ten to six?
Ten until you all decide you're ready to go.
Historically, ten to six. Hearing none.
What was the other two days? I'm sorry.
Today, I'm sorry.
It was fifth, sixth, and then what?
Fifteen.
The twelfth, fifth, sixth.
Six, twelfth, thirteenth, fifteenth.
All starting at ten. Scheduled end times for all is six.
So fifth, sixth, twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth.
Yes.
Just to note that the twelfth would also be a council meeting day. So it'd be an extra long day that day, but just to note that.
That was going to be my next.
That's a whole day with the council meeting, too.
We can we can we can we can try the we can try try the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth.
Yeah, I would.
Oh, yes. It's the fourteenth of the court day.
All right, no problem.
Courts on Wednesday. Let's uh let's let's do, if we have to, let's end that Monday at four. Give council dinner. Yeah, let let council have dinner and then we'll come back with a meeting at six. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The the twelfth will end at four, have dinner, and then we'll. And let's try to have a short agenda that that Monday.
Yes, sir.
So it's twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth.
Fifth, sixth, twelfth, thirteenth, fifteenth.
Fifth, sixth, twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth.
All right, thank you.
Do you need us to act on that, Kiera?
I will need a motion, so we can go ahead and make those changes.
I will take a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, aye, in opposed? Item ten, city manager report is always counsel. Report submitted by, excuse me, a submitted report to update council and community on the standard operations of the city. Report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council as always. On the standard operations of the city, report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council, as always, council, I will. Uh, I will give option for us to pull these items as I, um, as I read them. If there's an item that you'd like to pull, just let us know. Uh, ten-one, city clerk update. Ten-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four grant applications. Ten-three, June twenty-twenty-four municipal court statistics. Ten-four, June twenty-twenty-four public works sta- statistics. Ten-five, July twenty-twenty-four city of Lamarck sales tax report.
Mayor, I'd like to. Some form, more information on the city clerk update.
Very good, does anyone else have any others?
Uh, I'd like the grant applications and always want to hear about the sales tax.
Very good, any other council members, members, excuse me. Uh, let's start with, uh, ten-one, city clerk update, Ms. Nance.
Uh, yes, sir, did you have questions, or did you just kind of want to do a quick overview? Of what we, what we submitted here?
I'm not sure, it's such a general category, if you're going to put it on, I'd just ask for specific specificity, so that would help. Kind of like, uh?
Sure, so we added a narrative, uh, in the agenda form, and then we also added, uh, the two policies, so. We were asked to bring forth, um, just so the council could see what the agenda policy was, um, and how that's. Being ran out of the department, so we added that as a supporting document, it's. Uh, relatively detailed of how the agenda policy works from the time. Department submit for both the council as well as the boards and commissions, um, agendas and what our posting schedules are like. We also included the publications, um, for ordinances and bids, what that procedure looks like, we included that as well. Um, our, and just the short version of that is our standard posting day is on Wednesday. Um, that's the date that we have scheduled along with the Galveston Daily News, it's been pretty consistent for a while, uh. Like, kind of, we were having some errors with that in the beginning, now that we have worked with them to get a schedule out, uh, it's been. Working pretty well for us, um, so our scheduled posting date is on Wednesday. With us reviewing it on Wednesday, if it doesn't make it in the Wednesday paper, for whatever reason, they ran out of space or whatever, it runs on that Friday. Um, in the agenda form, there's just a short narrative that says, uh, we're fully staffed for the first time since I've been here. Um, with that, a lot of projects and audits have been going on for the last three months or so. Um, that's why you saw that large amount of updated minutes from before, you'll probably get that one or two more times, we plan to have that project. Fully complete by October, um, we have a part-time records clerk who is working on, um, digitizing all of our records. Uh, we finished court records, I think, in, she stepped out, we finished that project in April. Um, so all of our court records are digitized, all of our city clerks' records are digitized, um, I believe. Uh, not outside of us, but I believe all of the fire records are, if not digitized, pretty close to it. Um, so we're trying to, over the next two to three years, get through all the departments to free up space in terms of storage, that is what her primary function will be. Um, and then our deputy city clerk is, uh, working through her training, she's, uh, handling. Our boards and commissions, um, public information and a few other, purchasing and a few other tasks as well, so it's just a general health update. For where we've, where we've gotten in these last few months.
To, to follow up question, the?
Yes, sir.
The tax updates that you send out on bid packages and meetings. I do get those all the time. Is that the same system that the deputy city manager was talking about, which I never get? He said?
No, sir, we operate into two different notification systems.
Well, yours works well, is all I can say, I get those in the middle of the night. I'm, I'm thinking it's always the fire call, and, uh. So that I get those, the other thing that's not been corrected, you have I spoken about this, is the daily news and their meeting notices. Still only shows us having one meeting per month, does not show having two meetings a month.
Yes, sir, we have reached out to them about that, but I know they had some turnover in that particular department, so we'll, we'll, we'll reach out again, see if we can get that corrected.
Well, thank you.
Um, Kiera, along those lines. When that happens, I assume you do that through email?
Make those, uh, requests?
Reach out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Um, so it's good practice to, to share that with council. If you've reached out, you've reached out via email, which lets, alerts us that you have documentation, right, that you've done that.
Yes, sir.
But I want to, I want to drill down, I want to be absolutely clear. On the idea that the council wants ultimately the city clerk's office. To be responsible for all of the agendas, whether it be planning and zoning, cemetery board, Omega Betors.
Yes, sir.
It was fragmented before, and every, in different departments were. Um, handling the bulk of the prep and the posting work. I don't believe, I don't believe this council believes that that's the most efficient way.
Correct, and I'll, I'll clarify a little bit, so the way the process works now is with our software, um, each item, just as with the council meeting. They're originated by the departments, right, whichever is their liaison department, they originate the items that come to us. For creation and approval, so they give us the supporting documents, all the research that has been done, but we essentially. Is, uh, Ms. Casey, actually, she's, she was here earlier, but I think she's, she's gone for the night. She creates the agenda and it gets approved by me before it gets posted, so whereas they give us. The documentation, we essentially create the agendas for, uh, the public and the postings.
Be- because. The lack of documentation. Requires that we hold the departmental staff responsible. Lack of documentation.
Yes, sir.
Lack of or error in posting requires that we hold you accountable.
Yes, sir.
So I want to be absolutely clear that all of our meetings. Will have proper postings, that will be posted regularly, right?
Yes, sir.
If there is no documentation for that meeting, then that's a conversation that the council has to have with that committee, right?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to council having to have that conversation with you because it was posted in error, or inadvertently, or, uh, not at all.
Yes, sir, and that's actually since we made those changes, um, that's happened like once or twice, where. We get to the point where we have, you know, deadline days and we're like, hey, you guys haven't turned in anything. And they say there is nothing to turn in, so we actually have, we now reach out to. The chairperson of that committee and say, hey, you know, you're supposed to have a meeting next week, next whatever day it is. We did not receive anything from you, we're just ma- making you aware that we're going to have to cancel this meeting due to lack of substance. And then we can, we commit, communicate that with the committee as well. So, and then all of, if you notice on the website, we post meetings quarterly. Um, so everything, obviously, from, I believe now until October, that is scheduled is already on the website. And we'll just identify it as a canceled meeting from there. So that way everyone knows, like, yes, there was a meeting that was scheduled, but we're not going to be able to have.
So who councils the meeting?
Uh, that's done by our office.
Who makes the determination on whether or not to cancel?
Um, it depends, usually it's the, it's usually the chairperson, we don't have that conversation until after we've spoken to the chairperson of that committee.
So there's a meeting that was, that, that's scheduled to be posted, and there's absolutely no, no supporting documentation?
We reach out to the chair of that committee.
Please tell me that. Your office is not canceling those meetings.
We don't cancel them arbitrarily, um, it's a conversation, like I said, once we get to that point, we reach out. To the chairperson and say, hey, we haven't received anything, do you know of anything that needs to happen? And most of the time, I think it's happened twice, they're like, no, there's nothing for us to meet about, we're not going to meet. And we say, okay, and then we cancel the meeting because it is what we were. Told to do by that chair.
Okay, uh, uh, because I, I'm personally, and Gus can weigh in on this, but I'm personally having some heartburn.
Okay.
With your office having the, um, purview. To cancel meetings, I think it puts you in ju- in danger. I think that, um, as a resident, as a taxpayer, I would rather you, your office. Post a meeting with no documentation, right? Because that's your role, and that's a vital role. Um, as opposed to your office making the determination that it should be canceled because it's. It can be seen as arbitrary, right? You, you, you're just canceling meetings, uh, because you decided, right? And we don't ever want to have that perception. Uh, Gus, how do you feel about that? I, I'm, I'm, I'm really having heartburn with that.
Yeah, uh, um, I think the, i- if there's nothing, if there's not a subject to meet about. And, and there's been nothing given to meet about that, I think that's what she's referring to, but i- if. There is concern still about. Her office making that decision to not post it, then she could, then her office could absolutely post an agenda that's just. Call the role, and then there's nothing on it, so, or, um, they, they, those boards could still take public comment.
So, so let me, hold, hold on a minute, may I put it, so you suggesting when, when, when. The determination is made to cancel the meeting, that there is not even an agenda in place? Or are you talking about background information associated with an agenda?
I think?
I guess, I'm trying to answer that question, because, I mean, we still put a notice up that says, hey, this meeting. Will not be happening, it's not that we don't notify the public that the meeting is not happening, if that's what you're asking.
No, I, I'm asking, when, when the determination is made to cancel these meetings. Is it because there is no agenda? Or is it because there is an agenda, but there is no supporting documentation?
No, it's because there is no agenda, period, it means that there was nothing for them to talk about. Not that they want to talk about stuff, but they didn't give us the background, so therefore we're not, we don't make that determination, the answer is. We have an agenda prepped and ready, but there was nothing given to us, so we call, first we speak with the liaisons and they say, hey, there's no subject to discuss. Then we speak with the chairperson of that board, and they also agree there's no subject, and that's usually when the person, when that chairperson says, well, we don't have anything to talk about.
Okay.
So we're not going to meet.
Okay, so you're not, uh, you're talking about no agenda at all?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, yes, no, this, not without having the supporting documents, that's just a conversation that we have to have with the staff, like, you have to give me something. You can't just say you want to meet and not give them anything to meet about, does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 that makes sense, better sense, I still would like, um, for me. There has to be something from the chair. I, I, I think you need, you need some, some documentation, your office needs documentation, even if it's, we have nothing to meet about. Uh, so that if it is canceled and someone were to say, uh, why was it canceled, you have documentation, the chairperson of this committee. Uh, in writing, uh, said that there was nothing to meet about.
Yes, sir, either it comes in an email thread between us and that chairperson, or it's a phone call that's followed up with an email thread, like part of the conversation we had.
Okay.
We're not.
I, I understand better than that, may I put it, did you have?
I'm. I think that. We set up these. Rules as a city, right? I mean, it's in our charter, we have, we reference certain committees in our charter, and. I, I believe that we should consistently post an agenda for every meeting. And if, the difference is, it's an agenda that's been properly posted, if I as a resident wish to show up or other interested party. Just to express my public opinion as to some matter that is of the, under the, um, purview of that committee. Then I should be able to do so, um, and. If there is nothing to talk about in terms of old business or new business. But certainly, most of these committees at least should have a financial report. And something presented, or the minutes from the last meeting, you know, there's a structure, um. This, this business of, of, uh, some chairperson just saying, we have nothing to talk about, cancel the meeting, is not good. Good municipal government, that's my opinion, and, and, um. There's, there's, there's obligations that we have as, as a city, and, uh. And there's obligations that you also take as a member of these committees that you, you agree to, to be there, and, uh, that's. And if you're not going to be there, then we need to know about it, because we can change the membership, my person can be changed. That's, that's my view.
So it, it sounds like perhaps. Uh, council would like for those meetings to be scheduled, to be posted, even if it's just. Uh, an opening, a, uh, period for public comment, and then adjournment. Uh, the consistency of those meetings, the consistency of service, the consistency of posting. I think, I think will, uh, suffice.
Yes, sir.
And then all, that takes you out of the line of fire as well, Kiera, right? You know, we, we, we're coming, we have this.
Right. Let's, uh, let's move to item ten-two, grant applications that was pulled by Mr. Ross, I believe. Uh, Mr. Ross wants to discuss this handout, is that right?
Yes, that's the.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. We have Christine here, we also have Miss Alice, who helped participate, put this together along with other staff. Um, but we're, any questions you may have?
Mr. Ross?
So, the front page is awarded and paid for those just awarded?
Those are awarded, and those are all current projects, and we were asked to provide three lists. One of awarded and funded. Uh, or applied, awarded, funded, awarded and funded being the same thing. Applied for and denied, meaning that we were not funded. And applied for, but we're waiting to hear a response. So those are the three sheets that are included.
So what's the difference between the, on the loss page? The Mayhand Park restoration for three hundred thousand dollars and the Mayhand Park ones that. We're looking at. For a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars and?
Certainly.
The, I mean.
Certainly, um, with, with Mayhand Park, as was discussed earlier, we have applied for a lot of different grants. Um, for, for Mayhand Park, um, and just in general. Uh, for example, the one that you're noticing for three hundred thousand, that was specific to the walking trails, we had identified a funding source. That could have paid for the walking trails that were part of the Parks Master Plan for Mayhand specifically. We applied for that one, but did not receive that funding. So a lot of these projects that we applied for have different scopes of work. This is one that we brought to you specifically for the walking trails, and unfortunately, we were not funded for that. So hence, those matching funds that we would have been obligated for had we been funded. We are no longer obligated for, now, should these fundings, uh, become available in the future, we may look to apply for them again. But at this time, that list of the ones lost represents the ones that we applied for, but have already been told we did not receive. And again, please, this, this document, the one that's on the agenda stamped draft, this one should have also been stamped draft. We're still working on finalizing this, even to the point, uh, Miss Alice was on her way to meet with us here today, unfortunately, she was still going to make it to the meeting, glad she's safe, she, uh, had an accident on the way. So we, we were able to put this together just last minute, so please consider this as a draft.
A couple of things I'd like to bring up, um, the, there's a, there's a company. I guess Provision, Attico, Caesar, you did some of the grants, and Goodman. The. Provision Company did seven grants, uh, and that we weren't approved, that was a sixteen thousand dollar loss, but then you have. Two with Goodman at a thirty-nine, roughly thirty-nine thousand dollar loss, so. To me, just at a glance, looking at this, it seems that the Provision Company would be a more efficient. Company to use, probably.
Well, provisions is Miss Alice, who's here before you, that's who that is, um. Well, I just say that for, for reference, so you, you. Well, I just say that for, for reference, so you would know. Um, the Goodman Group, um, is, is one of another sources that we use. We've used Grant Works for other ones, and then there's just others. Uh, unfortunately, in the world of, of grants, there's there's varying success rates. So for example, if you look at that on the ones lost, but then you also turn around and look at the ones, for example, that we've been able to attain, one of the things is different folks have specialties in different areas. For example, um, Grant Works has shown themselves to be one of the leaders, uh, in uh, water, wastewater, um, that type of infrastructure, for example. Uh, Goodman Group has shown and is a, a group that was used, I think Mayor Dean, back to Mayor Hawking's days, when you guys did it twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. That, that would have been the Goodman Group that did the, the previous, um, sustainability, um, project. Um, they've been used since then and they're more geared toward transportation projects, um, or any earmarks and stuff like that. Um, Provision two is Miss Alice works directly with a lot of the, uh, uh, maybe some of the smaller projects or the middle level projects. If it's really, really small, sometimes we take those on in-house. So it depends on what we can do, what our workload, you know, allows. Some of these organizations require payment upfront. Some of them bill as they go, and some of them are only awarded if funded. So some of the bigger ones for the bigger grants do use, you use that method most of the time. Because if you look at that and then you look at Grant Works, for example, well, they only bill you for the ones that they receive. And their track record, you would think is great, but then all the ones that may have applied from the past that they had not received wouldn't be shown, because this is only reflecting twenty-three and twenty-four thus so far. We, we only went back just twenty-three and twenty-four, because that's what was asked. And it took us a lot of time. We, we've been very aggressive when it comes to grants. Um, almost to, to, to obviously make us question the, the rate that we've been going at. Um, which that's a direction that we've taken, uh, based on, uh, comments from, from council. We're being very careful and very meticulous on which ones that we bring to you. Uh, which is why we've taken a different direction the last four or five months of bringing you grants.
And she's capable of, obviously it says here, both state and federal grants, uh, Provision, is her.
Yes, no, she, she's very capable. She, she, she has that, that record. And may I just comment on one thing? If you go to the page that's listed in the front page, you can see awarded. Uh, there is one of these that we do not have an agreement for. Um, but we would want to tell you, we either would have had to move it to be applied, but not received, still pending, but we did receive late word on Friday. We're still waiting on the contracts, waiting on the letter. But if you look at the one listed under Public Safety for Catalytic Converter, uh, those are items that have been applied for and we did receive word that we are uh, on the list to be funded for, for, for that grant. So that grant is listed three times, because it was for three separate ones. Uh, that's one of the ones that was provided by, uh, Provisions, which was Miss Alice, so she does have a track record working on some of those public safety grants.
That one actually, the cool thing about it is, um, in, I, it, some, everything's on the CIP. Some is in the ARPA, but with the block cameras, we went after all forty and we're awarded all forty. Where on the ARPA list, we were, and it was the five-year agreement. So we got, you know, forty, six hundred and sixty-three thousand. But all these numbers cover the software, the warranties, et cetera. But I just wanted to point out, it was, and it's no match. So.
Right, wow.
So.
About five years?
It, the flock cameras are five years and then the drone and the trailer, it'll cover three years. But this, that whole number is not necessarily just the price of the drone, just the price. This is the price of the warranty, the software, the drone, et cetera.
Okay. The only thing not covered on that one in particular is if anybody would need training from the PD to actually operate it, that would be a cost that we would have to inherit. So that's an indirect match, but not a direct match to the funding.
Apply the drone.
Had to be certified and so forth, but that's one that is on here for applied and awarded. But I want you guys to know, we have not brought that one to you yet with a letter, but that's something that we've applied for the last five months, I believe, because it was one of the ones that was grouped with a no match.
We just sent out Friday the catalytic converter, me and Gandy, Lucian and Gandy went last Monday for a shortlist presentation. And then Friday the and we were actually the only city that were awarded a hundred percent of that grant. Everybody else had, you know, they had cuts here and there. But we got a hundred percent and they had a set of one, two and three phase. We applied, it's normally an eighty, twenty. And in phase two, they did zero match.
So the forty flock cameras that we were going to purchase with the capital improvement program, we are receiving via grant with no match.
Correct, and we had in the ARPA funds as well a hundred and twenty to go towards it.
So we would have to do now, Mayor, once we receive that award letter, and once it's, and so on, it's written and we sign for a contract, that council agrees, at, at a following meeting, we'll bring you the reallocation of those ARPA funds to do that, which will be in line when we start bringing you a lot of these RFPs that's task working to put out. We're going to be getting those hot and heavy in the next couple of months.
Mayor Portman, do you have something?
Well, you just answered that. That's what I needed clarity on the ARPA reallocation. Following up on a question, Councilman Lariat, just to be clear, I think I heard you say that the, that the lost amounts with Goodman, it was, it's a contingency agreement, basically.
No.
We still have to pay the fee? I heard you say they didn't have to.
Grant Works is one of the organizations that does not get funded until we actually receive funding, or does not get paid, excuse me, does not invoice for services, until they're funded, and they usually write those into, uh, what the actual, um, grant award would be. In this case, uh, since we don't have an in-house grant administrator, we use partners such as Goodman Provisions and, and some of the others. Forget the other one that we're using right now for the other MIT mod, um, the name, uh, public management. Uh, so, so there are several that we've used in the past. Some of them do have contingency agreements, or what you would call based on awards. Some of them you have to pay for upfront. And those are based on those agreements, on, on those individual projects. For example, Grant Works, on a lot of them, they do that, but not on all of them. If there's certain, for example, if we would have asked Grant Works to write an application for parks, that one is not included on the contingency amount. So this, just so for, 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 for understanding, there's some that they do, there's some that they don't.
Who are the ones on this list, uh, highlighted?
Sorry, which, which list are you?
On the law.
The law.
The law. Why are they highlighted?
They, I just didn't, I'm sorry, really, I was three hours behind my
Those could have just been.
And so I was not able to pick this whole month. I helped with the Delaney and by you, I just wasn't able to pull the that's when we won Emancipation Trail as well, the SH three.
And for example, there's, I, I just noticed now, we were communicating, uh, but right before the meeting, that there's one down here that is actually should be on here, that's not, which was the Texas Half Sidewalks. Technically, that project was finished in twenty-three, so thus that one does need to be added to this list. So why I tell you this is a work in progress, we'll, we'll continue to update this, this list and bring it back to you.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the best, uh, thing to do is to continue to update it. Uh, and the flow, I, I think we need to see the we, council has earmarked a lot of different things. And, and we've backed out of them because there is grant funding available. And so we need to, you know, it starts to get confusing and, and cloudy. So we need a, we need a, a trail. Council allocated, grant was awarded, monies were backed out and reallocated based on council direction. So we need to see that trip. Ms. Anderson, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to try to understand what I'm reading. I've got fifty-two year old eyes, so you're going to have to be in my magnifying glass too. Um, so the project total, that's three hundred and thirty-three million.
Yes, and that, and that, that should need to be updated. We, one of the things we have to back out of here is the two hundred and fifty-six million for Tech Dot. Technically, that is considered a grant.
Okay.
But it's also part of the bigger scope, so what we decided to do is we're going to back that off of this table, so it doesn't show, like, so it doesn't give it a, a different impression.
Different impression, okay, that's good. So let, let's, let's take that out. I just, I wanted to give a number.
Oh, what the number is?
You're a math teacher.
Yeah, sure, I can do that pretty quick. I think it's like seventy-eight million, three thirty-three minus two fifty-six.
Cause that, that looked real big and I was like, really? That, that, we should shout that one.
Seventy-seven, seventy-seven million dollars, looks like what had been awarded uh, to us that we're working on at present time.
In one, in one year.
In the twenty-three, twenty-four, but a lot of this, remember, is, is carryover from projects we're still working on. We actually got the agreements accomplished either very, very late twenty-two or into twenty-three, and hence why we're starting some of this work now.
That, that's also the forty-eight point nine million dollars against water treatment plan work. Right, the, uh, manhole replacements, the sewer.
Correct.
Sewer line repairs, and so there are other large.
Yes, sir.
Uh, larger grants involved, even when you get down, what did you say, seven, eight million?
Seventy-seven million.
Seventy-seven, I mean, roughly, I just took a rough number of
Close to seventy million of that is, is those larger grant, uh, funding opportunities that we've had collectively.
So out of seventy-seven million grants awarded, we've only had to pay two million.
Uh, yeah, out, out of seventy-seven, our share looks like just a shade over two million.
That's no worth it for one year.
Well, I'm going back to Mayor's point, a lot of these were from before, but yes.
There are a few items that were paid, like the, um, Mayhem Park program planning that's paid, but that's twenty-six thousand. Um, I'll have to go through this with them to see what has actually been paid. So that number may come.
The bike audit, we that received payment or any day now, I'm working with Parks Department on that.
Uh, so this will be a work in progress. One of the things we also, uh, talked about doing is creating this as a dashboard, so we can keep that as a live document that we could share on our city's website, so we could, to your point, not just to bring it back regularly, but it could be updated real time. So if we apply to a grant and we receive it, then it will go, you know, obviously we'd move into, from pending to received and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Once it comes to council, gets approved and, and we take that action. But if we find out that we were not awarded, if, if we get one of those, we regret to inform you that you've not been, you know, selected to advance in this grant, then we could quickly move them from pending to lost. Now, that's something we could do internally, obviously, because we'll know by that point that it's now not, not going to be funded and no longer on the pending.
Yeah.
This is our first official swing at it. Yes, as you can tell, it's a lot of different moving parts to it, but, but, but we want to continue bringing this forward.
Remember, remember, we need to see if, if, if it's all based on council action. If council earmarked it and a grant replaced it, we need to see where it was backed out and where a council, council reallocated, so there's no confusion.
Yes, right.
We need, we need a, we need, so that the check register is easy for everybody to read. We know who's paying what and where and which checks have been paid and which ones are still in the process of making through the bank.
And again, my fault for being late, I really, and to have the better, if you will go to the pending though, there is a ton of no matches on there that are alive. Equipment that are on ARPA or the CIP. You know, the same street, that's on the ARPA list, uh, Firehouse Subs, which I know Councilman Ross is the um, AEDs for city buildings, that's something that, um, the Lone Star Grant, selling the light, power, it's structured. Those are both ones for both. As well as in the AFG, the very top, thermal imaging and power load stretch up off their own ARPA.
So, what we're hoping as a result of this is once we hear about these in the next month or so, uh, to two months, um, that we'll be able to come back to and offer you, hey, you know, you allocated these funds through ARPA, but now because we've been funded through grants, you have more to reallocate that they would allow you to be more with, so we can still meet that deadline of getting everything allocated before the end of the year. That, that pretty much sums up our, our short report today.
Very, very good. Jeff?
Two quick items. You keep saying reallocation, but I think that I would ask that we formalize that with a budget amendment. We've gotten away from that for too long. Those are, if, if we'd, if, we'd made it, if, if we'd included whatever the item in our budgets that require, and we're no longer going to utilize that, that requires budget amendments to come back to this council.
Certainly, since it was passed, and Gus, correct me if I'm wrong, if it, since it was passed as a separate ordinance, totally separate from the city's budget as far as an ARPA allocation, what the funding source, ARPA themselves.
Yeah, I'm not talking about ARPA, I'm just saying.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
The allocations that we've made in the budget that you've covering now with grants, those reallocations that you're saying require a budget amendment.
Yes, sir, sorry, I was not, I meant, I was talking more about the
That helps us, that helps us keep to track.
Certainly.
We're doing, so that's number one. Number two, um, Miss Provision, I'm sorry.
The company's name is Provision.
Alice, I've heard your name. It's good to put a face with the name. But you, you go back with us for a while, don't you? Two thousand eighteen, yeah. Okay. And, um, I, I don't need the figure now, but at some point, I'd like to know a bit more in terms of your grant history. What, what's that represented to the city, uh, successfully? I don't need it now, but just
Well, well, we'll certainly provide that, Mayor Portman. We, we, we've talked about providing that in the test.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, also, one last thing, since we kind of alluded to it indirectly there, as far as our CIP, remember the last time we brought that to you, it was as a draft form? Um, now that we have a lot to update, we'll update that as well and bring that forward. We're hoping to bring that in conjunction with a budget we're right thereafter.
Very good. And item ten-five, uh, the sales tax report, Ms. Turner, while you are before us.
Yes, so, um, for the month of July, um, that's collections for April. The city of Lamar collected four hundred and fifty thousand nine forty-nine fifty. And the twenty-five percent portion for EDC is one fifty, one hundred fifty thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and fifty cents.
It was six oh one.
Total six oh one two.
Yes. Yes, totally six oh one and change.
What, in April? I mean.
Yeah, we, we, we weren't sure exactly what, what that reasoning was. I, I, other than you have two great months followed by some other inconsistencies. We talked about this last year at budget. Um, we were trying to be as aggressive as possible when we did the budget. Um, council, you know, asked us to be a, as aggressive as possible in our planning, uh, of that. Um, just hoping for us to hit those figures that we're able to have an aggressive, uh, August and September reports to close out the year.
The, um, sales tax, oh, I know. The, my question, the company that we entered into an agreement with to do the sales tax. Have, what, what results of any have they produced?
Okay, they're going to produce a report, um, for July. I saw her the other day at my meeting. Um, that's coming out any day now.
All right, very good.
So, yes, we'll begin our first report.
And next, oh, very good. The other thing, I would like, if, if you wouldn't mind, and it would be embarrassing to him, is the young man that's with you to say, is that your son I got?
That's my son, my little golfer.
Is, uh, you should be proud of your mother. I don't know what it is. You should be proud of your mother, okay? She does an exceptional job. Okay, I don't know if he's listening.
He's very shy.
Okay. His headphones in or something.
That's called shyness.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. I think we have come now to item uh, item eleven, requests and announcements. Quest by mayor and council members, items to be placed on future city council agendas. And announcements on city events, community interest. Texas Government Code five five one dot four one five. Items of community interest include expressions of thanks, congratulations or condolences. Information regarding holiday schedules, an honorary or salutary recognition of a public official, employee or other citizen. Except that the discussion regarding a change in the status of a person's public office or public employment is not an honorary or salutary recognition for the purposes of this subdivision. Reminder about an upcoming event organized sponsored by the governing body. Information regarding a social ceremony or a community event organized or sponsored by an entity other than the governing body that was attended or, uh, is scheduled to be attended by a member of the governing body or an official or an employee of the municipality or county. Announcements involving an imminent threat to the public health and safety of the people in the municipality or county that has been, that has arisen. in the municipality or county that has been, that has arisen after the posting of the agenda. So I believe tonight, Mr. Ross, it is your turn to go first.
All right, uh. I hope everybody has survived as much as they can since Burl came through, kind of threw everything off. For a lot of us, from council meeting back to back. Not having a VFW meeting, so I don't know what's going on for our August stuff until we have our meeting next month. Um, those that didn't know, I traveled to Utah on last week to try to bring a brick and mini fig franchise to the city of Lamarck, and it went pretty okay-ish, I guess. Uh found out through their algorithm that anything south of Dickinson to Galveston, out to Lake Jackson, up to Manville and back was not worthy of a franchise of any kind, which caught me off guard. And so it started out as a firm no to a possible maybe to text messages on our trip back from, from Utah about how you guys might have changed our mind a little bit. Uh and as I was walking out of their franchise on that Friday, that the words coming out of my mouth are you have thirty days to be family or competition. And that, so we're, yeah, we're still raising fu- trying to raise funds to bring the franchise. Or to defeat the franchise, one of the two. There will be a Lego store in Lamarck, one way or another. Uh that's gonna happen. And I'm not gonna listen to somebody tell me we're not good enough to do it. Other than that, I got nothing else right now, cause I'm tired still from from the drive, but I'll keep y'all posted as we figure it out.
That's my beloved Larry.
Um, I want to say thank you to Miss Yancy for taking care of the fire. Um, the people that were affected by the fire right before the storm hit, um on the set, July seventh, um wasn't your district, but you you jumped in there. Um, uh, Mr. Garcia, if I could also get a uh update on ditches. Which ones are being cleaned out? Um, you provided a pretty significant number last time. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're we're still moving forward with that. Um, if I could also get a separate breakdown of what has been done in my district as well, that would be great. I understand we've had the hurricane, um we've been dealing with that, but I still want to keep, keep moving with that. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Miss Yancy?
Yeah, so with the um hurricane, for those of you that are still having problems with FEMA dot gov, keep at it, stay on the phone, they will call you back. To try to at least get um your food restored. Hats off to the city of Lamarck and all the food that was given away. I got a lot of um thank yous on that. With the MREs and of course the volunteers with the pancakes, the pancakes were very good on Saturday. So thank you, guys. I thought that was just a added touch to everyone that participated and took took some out. And my uh my heart goes out to Chris, who I didn't know had passed away till I returned, uh from out of town. So I guess we're praying for him. Um, and also praying for Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, who I worked with that I've known her since nineteen ninety-four, when I worked with Representative Al Edwards. And that's, I don't think that still hit me. I'm still, I knew she was sick, we all saw she was getting ill. But we have lost a giant for in Texas politics and and the way that she fought for citizens in Texas, so definitely praying for her family and the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority as well, as they uh lose their uh amazing sister. Um, back to school events start uh next week, and I don't know what our library is doing for that. Uh but I am says I'm trying to look for some donations to maybe uh for people that have been asking me what I have donations, would I send them? I mean, you know, I may just send them to you and Amy, so if kids need something there, they can, they'll have it. Um, and then um signs along Lake Road, I've gotta complain about some, a lot of the signs are uh needs to be replaced. I don't know if it's because of the storm or they're faded, but we need to work on on that as well, and nice to see that the church's sign is up and maybe by August. So I'm excited because I see some things happening in District A that have been closed like two years and now they're opening. I'm still trying to see what we're gonna do with the old fa- uh Family Dollar store. Hopefully, we can get a grocery store, our mom and pop kind of store in the area and uh to council, to you, council, Councilman, um Ross, keep fighting for the Lego store. Whatever I could do to add, add to that, to to let them know about all the people that are coming, right, to Galveston County. I do want to say, one of my um children uh went to Great Village Lodge and she was just amazed how beautiful it is. So hats off to a neighboring city Webster for I call them now the gateway to tourism in Galveston County. So, and I wasn't, I was, I was here in Zoom, I wasn't here last week, but um for the council, but it's good to be back home and um I don't think I've recovered yet. I think we're all still tired, but just want to, now that I'm here, just say thank y'all for everyone for checking on us and checking on the um uh my uh my family and the neighbors and um um I will tell you jokes of my children, but like, where's our council person? We need to see him on Meadow Lane, cause they heard that you were on other streets. So I said, maybe I need to call and tell, come check on us, but uh we still have some of those limbs on Meadow Lane. So uh that's why I asked my neighbors, like, Yancy, what's, when y'all gonna pick up our our dead limb? So I'm, that's why I said in a couple of weeks, maybe, but thanks for helping me with the dog, cause I got chased several times. His first weekend, I haven't got chased, so somebody got him. So I can walk again. But anyway, but I, it's good to be home. I know I like to laugh and have fun, and so uh to our teachers, I'm praying for you guys. And um let's, let's encourage a teacher the next few weeks, because this was a short summer for some of them as they go back. But that's all I have here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Very quickly, always thank you to everyone. Uh, thank you, sometimes it's not enough of a word. Uh but other languages say better somehow. I kind of like the French one, merci, merci, you know, that's, it's also says, let's all have mercy. And uh but outstanding response, Jackie, the Pennington, thank you, and um Linda as well too, and and everyone, you guys uh coming in distributing plates and and the patience as well too. I think the patience, that's one thing I I saw both here at the Cooling Center. Everybody had patience, police had patience, firemen had patience, everybody uh were were very, very. And um I I was at the regional headquarters today for the Red Cross I'm deploying and and Lamarck is on the list of of successful events. And I said, uh, that's because of the people that we have here. Uh, I remind everyone that if you have not reported your property as major or destroyed, please call it into the emergency manager. Uh that is something that um Red Cross today began providing some level of financial assistance to those properties having major damage or were destroyed. Uh and Kyle, we did pick up, I think, going around. Identified four properties, at least we saw here in Lamarck. Uh and some of them there in the Highlands. Uh, I'm just amazed at the size of the trees that were that were cut down and and there, so. Uh, and uh, this is now switching over to uh a recovery mode. There'll be lots of different organizations. Don't get duped, seniors, don't get duped by a variety of of people coming in and offering to put on a new roof, uh and ask to be paid upfront or some portion, uh they're they're, they always happen, that always happens. And uh so don't, either pay for a work after it's done and inspect it as well too. Um, yeah, those are the things I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On Saturday, I I did attend the uh the Thankfulness Breakfast. I believe all of council, uh with the exception of Mr. Ross who was traveling, I believe, uh attended uh this breakfast to lend support. Great job, Mayor Protem, for working to organize this. Uh great concept, great idea. The people that volunteered, the uh Pennington family, uh I believe Mrs. Terry Taylor.
Terry.
Um, uh as well, I believe I saw Linda Duatt there. Uh I don't, nah, I'm naming names, and so now I'm in the dangerous.
Jacqueline and uh, no, Ja- the the two interns, Ray.
The two interns were there as well. Uh I lent, I lent moral support, Ms. Yancy, I believe, uh stopped in to lend moral support. Councilman Lowry, I believe, delivered meals to some of those folks in the community. Great event. I I believe the uh community was appreciative of the breakfast, the free breakfast, the smiling faces, the warm embraces. Uh the idea that we all made it, uh we all survived another hurricane, I think, brought good energy to our uh community. Uh today, um the summer program, our youth summer program has started, it was abbreviated uh and amended uh because of Hurricane Barrel. Uh but I believe we have three weeks uh uh of worth of summer programming. Uh.
Two to three.
Two to three weeks worth of summer, uh we're pushing for three summer program, programming for our young people. That's good news, uh despite Hurricane Barrel. Uh we're gonna provide a uh an activity for our young uh people to be a part of, sponsored by the city of Lamarck and the people of Lamarck. And tonight, uh at the library was uh the uh latest uh the latest installment of our small business workshop. Uh when I went to visit with those participants, there were about, I would say eighteen to twenty there today, and they were uh in a workshop uh that was uh about building credit. Uh and and growing your business, growing your business credit. And so I wanted to thank the Texas City of Lamarck Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Development Center, as well as Texas First Bank for the efforts on tonight. Uh we are growing a more educated and prepared spa- small business uh community. Uh and that will pay dividends for us years to come. Not to mention that many of our neighbors, uh tonight, I believe there was folks from Santa Fe. Uh as well as I believe, I thought I heard Dickinson, I may be wrong. Uh but there are uh participants from neighboring cities who also uh would like this type of training and information to better small business in those areas as well. So it's always good to help uh our neighboring communities. Lastly, uh if you have not heard, uh the Art of Coffee uh will be closing in our community. Um, the Art of Co- Art of Coffee has been a central uh central figure uh in our community. It's been a primary gathering place uh for for all sorts of things, from talent competitions to poetry uh slams, uh to political events, um and much, much more. They will be, uh the Art of Coffee will be sadly missed. Uh I would say uh irreplaceable uh for what they brought to our community. Uh and we hate to see them go. Uh, but most certainly, uh we move forward as a community. Uh recruiting, attracting, and embracing new business uh to come in and provide services. Uh some services that the Art of Coffee uh was providing. Uh they can never replace the Art of Coffee, but perhaps we might find some folks that might provide uh different types of services that will get us through. Um, those were my comments tonight. Again, to the council, thank you for your uh consideration uh uh in these matters. Uh and if there is nothing further, we don't have anything under executive session. So we move now to item fourteen, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Just a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Rick, okay, I'm out of here.